This is Hatton Litman speaking to you from the MCPs Boardroom. It's six o'clock. Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees. For those of you that are joining us on Zoom and need a little primer, I'm going to go through a few of the controls. If you take your cursor to the bottom of your screen, you'll see buttons for unmute and start or stop video. That's how you'll be able to control what we see and hear from you. We are asking everybody to stay on mute tonight unless they are making public comment. If you take your cursor to the middle of the screen, you'll see a button for chat. That is only enabled for you to chat with the host, me, in case you're having any kind of technical trouble. And Trustee Decker, I appreciate. Thank you for that chat that you're having a hard time hearing. We're having some audio adventures in the room. So I'm going to encourage all the trustees in the room who speak into the mic to speak loudly and clearly and get your mouth as close to your mic as you can. And Trustee Decker will try and turn it up in just a moment. The other feature that you'll want to know about is your Participants menu. If you take your cursor to the bottom of the screen and click on Participants, a white menu will open up where you'll see everybody in the Zoom. At the bottom of that white window, you'll see a button for raise hand. That's how you'll raise your hand to be acknowledged for public comment. When you raise your hand, it'll place you in order, and I will call on each public commenter in order. It doesn't look like we've got anybody on the phone tonight, so I'll skip those instructions for now. And with that, I will turn it over to Chair Holland to officially start the meeting.
Thanks. And so I'll call the meeting to order. I'll welcome everyone, and I'll take roll call. And per seeing who's on Zoom and who's in the room, we have all trustees present except Trustee Lorenzen, who's out of town. Trustee McDonald, I'm not sure she's on her way. And I believe Trustee Vogel is on her way. And so everyone else is here. And so with that, we will stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It looks like the boardroom TV is making a little bit of noise. I don't know if we...
Actually, some feedback in the microphone.
One?
It is.
Oh.
There you go. Oh.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Apologies. Apparently, it's my microphone in the boardroom that's making the noise. So with that, we'll move on to item number three on the agenda, which is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Is there any request from any trustee to make any modification to the order of the agenda or to revise it in any fashion? Not seeing any hands up. So we'll go ahead and move on to item number four, which is to approve the minutes from the Board of Trustees' Special Meeting from October 22nd, found on page four. First, is there any request for any kind of modification to those minutes? I'm not seeing any hands go up. So is there a motion to approve the minutes from the Special Board Meeting of October 22nd, moved by Trustee Agarres, seconded by Trustee Oldperson? All those in favor, please indicate by either saying aye or raising your hand. And okay, and I'm just looking for Trustee Wake. Trustee Wake, you haven't voted yet? It looks like Trustee Wake may not be able to hear us. So she hasn't voted, and I'm just going to check about Trustee Sturbis. I'm not finding Trustee Sturbis. Just one second. I don't see Trustee Sturbis. She was on here a minute ago.
You are correct. There's somebody ringing from the phone now.
Sorry, I lost you. I vote yes.
Okay, thanks. And we also lost Trustee Sturbis, but that's a majority of the board. So the motion to approve the minutes from October 22nd passes. And then we move on to approving the minutes for the regular board meeting from October 27th. Again, is there any request from any trustee to make any modifications to those minutes? Seeing no hands up. Then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of October 27th, moved by Trustee Agarres? Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Oldperson? All those in favor either say aye or yes or raise your hand. I'll vote yes. Okay. And Trustee Sturbis?
Yes.
Thank you. And Trustee Wake has her hand up? So that motion passes unanimously as to trustees present. And then we move on to public comment. This is public comment on non-agenda items. These are items we won't be discussing tonight on the agenda. And just to clarify, there's also a work session at the end of the meeting, which is a work session, so there's no public comment during the work session. But we do allow public comment at the beginning of every meeting and at the end of the regular meeting. So if you want to make public comment on any non-agenda item, please do so either now or at the end of the regular board meeting. And we ask you to, if you have an unusual spelling of your name, to spell your first and last name. And if you represent an organization, identify the organization. And we do ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. And so I'll be checking in with Hatton to see if there are any hands raised for public comment on a non-agenda item.
I do not see any. Oh, wait. Sorry, we got a phone.
Okay.
Do you want to call that person or turn off your mic?
Yes, I'm just not seeing the... Oh, the person whose last four digits are 1527. Please go ahead and unmute your phone and make your public comment. And do you want to explain how to...
Yes, I just, I guess I had a... Sorry, my name's Chris Onsbury. I'm a parent of two students at Hawthorne. I just didn't know. And I just wanted to understand that during the work session, there won't be public comment, so there won't be decision making during that space?
Right, that's why I was explaining that. So if anyone wants to make public comment either now or at the end of the regular board meeting on any non-agenda item, including the pandemic or anything else that anyone wants to bring to our attention, either now is the time or at the end of the regular meeting is the time.
Okay, well, that is an agenda item. That's why I'm asking. The work session is listed as an agenda item. So I didn't know if public comment related to the work session and the pandemic would be then or not.
A work session is handled differently than an agenda item. Typically, most agenda items are action items. This is actually an informal or not a formal agenda item, but a work session, which we've had in the past over many topics. I hope that clarifies your question. Yeah, we're not making any decisions during the work session. We're going to make decisions at a regular board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any public comment on any non-agenda item? Okay, not seeing any hands. I don't think Hatton. Okay, then we'll move on to correspondence. As you can see from the written packet and online, we have a number of written correspondence and public comment. And so it begins on page 12. And then we move on to our community connection. And so Dr. Watson, do you want to explain what's going on? And why we have Montana State University College of Nursing Community Connections that are going to be talking to us for a few minutes?
Yes, thank you, trustees. Hopefully, you can hear me all right on Zoom. But we've got two members of the Montana State University Nursing Program that are currently conducting or performing their student nursing processes in our school district. So we've got Rebecca. I see her on the Zoom, and I'm not sure if I saw Rachel.
I haven't seen Rachel.
Maybe they're together. I don't know that. So I think we'll, I'll go ahead and let Rebecca introduce the topic just so the board understands. As part of their nursing final project, they are doing some presentations in our schools to our students. And one of the requirements is that they talk to the board briefly about what they're doing in our schools. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Rebecca. And if we can find Rachel, we'll get her on too.
Hi, yeah, Rachel should be on. So I'm going to try to share my screen. Is that okay? Should that work?
Yeah, it should. And I see, I think I see Rachel there too. Do you want to raise your hand again?
Yeah, hi, sorry. I'm under Kano. I'm using my fiance's computer, so it doesn't come up as Rachel. But yeah, I can go ahead and introduce our project once Rebecca gets uploaded. Like we were introduced, we are MSU nursing students. We are currently wrapping up our last semester of nursing school. So that's pretty exciting. So in this semester, we have done a public health course. And in that course, Beck and I have been assigned a project to work with Missoula County Public Schools to introduce a handwashing curriculum. And the cool thing about this project is it's been passed down through the last couple of semesters. Our peers previously have been tasked with assessing the needs of a handwashing curriculum in our schools, any barriers we might face, and what our students have available to them right now. And so when Beck and I picked up the baton, our goal was to hopefully implement a curriculum this semester. But due to COVID and how spread thin our teachers are with keeping our kids in school and all they have tasks with, it just really wasn't a good time to kind of add on an additional task. So what Beck and I ended up focusing on was narrowing down a curriculum and kind of laying it out for our peers next semester to hopefully implement. And so I'll pass on to Beck, and she'll kind of explain the history of our project and what we hope for the future.
Yeah, thanks, Rachel. All right, so a little history of the project. So during the 2017-2018 school year, a mom did bring a concern up, the lack of expected handwashing at her daughter's elementary school. Little did she know, two years later, we'd be in the midst of a global pandemic. So it was kind of thought to be a no-brainer, but it really proved to be a larger task than expected. So Missoula County Public Schools initiated a personal health committee and has been working closely with MSU College of Nursing Students here in Missoula, seniors, and our public health course to address, assess, and implement practices to increase handwashing in our kiddos. So some of our past classmates spent a lot of time identifying the barriers to handwashing, not only behavioral for this age group, but also for kids here in Missoula. So some of the barriers they identified was poor adult and peer modeling of regular handwashing, unappealing bathrooms, lack of time and structural barriers. So structural barriers can be visibility and ability to reach sinks, soap dispensers, or paper towels. Our classmates actually went into all the Missoula County Public Schools and collected data on the bathroom. It was really great. They found that every bathroom was easily accessible and had all the stuff that kids need. And then in regards to implementing a program, it's just it's limited time for teachers. And so hopefully, we can do that. So why handwashing? It's easy, effective, and affordable. And in regards to COVID right now, until we have a vaccine, the main ways we have to protect ourselves are wear masks, social distance, and wash our hands. But then also diarrhea and pneumonia are some of the leading causes of death for kids under the age of five. And some of our kindergartners are just right around that age. But this simple behavior can really save lives and increase community health. So it can cut GI illnesses by almost one-half and acute respiratory infections by nearly a quarter. So not only does this impact the individual kid, but it also impacts education, economics, and equality for a whole community. So this is just a brief slide from the CDC on handwashing. And soaps, bar, liquid, and powder are all effective. So our classmates also sent out a survey to all the Missoula County Public School teachers. Our target population was second graders. So this is just the results from a few questions on the survey. So a question that was asked is if you do not teach your handwashing lesson or have a handwashing curriculum, would you use a sample lesson or curriculum if it was made available to you? Thirteen said yes, one no, one no answer. And do you think your students are washing their hands as often as they should be? And 15, so 100% said no. So our goal, nearly every year, nearly 22 million school days are lost due to the common cold alone and then also with everything going on with COVID. So hopefully, we're just keep kids healthy and in school as much as possible, but also help the Missoula County Public Schools really introduce an easy and affordable handwashing curriculum. So Rachel and I suggested curriculum is the Glow Germ. It's provided from the CDC, and it's on their website. All the worksheets are free and easy to download. It's age-appropriate, and it can be tailored to all the different grades, K through 6. It's also offered in three different languages. So here's just a quick screenshot. I'm a connect-to-the-dots activity for second graders. And then also the handwashing lesson plan. So it kind of has bullet points and talking points and instructions for teachers on how to just quickly do it. So why we chose this curriculum is based on the research provided by our peers. We found that this was the most age-appropriate for our pilot group, but also it can be used by different teachers in all the different grades. The worksheets are easily accessible to download and print. And the objects that are needed for the activities are pretty simple, just like a spray bottle. So a lot of it can be found in the classroom or easily purchased. So hopes for spring 2021 in our classmates that will be taking up this project in the spring is hopefully, the school board is able to set aside 15 to 25 minutes into the teacher's schedule and just kind of give them a heads up before spring term starts about this new curriculum that we hope to get going. And then our peers next semester will help implement it. And then afterwards, gather data to kind of see how it went and if there's things that can be improved. And then just help keep our community safe as much as possible and help keeping COVID numbers down and other illnesses as well. All right, so we'll just kind of open it up to you guys if you guys have any questions or comments.
Does anyone have any, any trustee have any questions for Rebecca or Rachel?
I do, Chair Holland, if that's okay?
Oh, sure. Yes, I just, I'm trying to catch everybody. Thank you, Trustee Decker. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Holland. Well, thank you so much for that presentation, and thanks for your work. And congratulations on being close to finishing. My only question is, I just might have missed it. Did you gather that information, the questionnaire that you asked teachers about whether they felt kids were washing their hands often enough? Was that this fall?
No, that was, I believe that was in the spring semester prior to ours. Thank you. Yeah.
Thanks. Any other questions from trustees? This is a community connection. I didn't know if any member of the public wanted to make a comment. Not a question, but a comment? I'm just checking with Hatton. It looks like none. Well, thank you both for doing it, and we certainly hope to hear back from you again. And hopefully, a survey that's taken this fall would be very, might be very different than what was taken in the spring now that we understand the value of project that you undertook or you and your nursing curriculum undertook. It was very prescient, and as you pointed out, we didn't know how important handwashing was going to be even in January of this year. So thank you very much, and thank you for sharing the information.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks. And now we come on, we move on to number 7A, which are student trustee reports. And so I'm just going to call them in the order that they're printed on the agenda just for convenience. So Jaden, if you're there, do you want to unmute and give us a report from...
Yeah, absolutely. So as she said, my name's...
Can you remind us of your first and last name? And what school are you reporting on just because we're recording it? Sorry.
What was that?
Jaden, would you state your first and last name in your school at the beginning of your report? And that's the same for all the student trustees?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So my name's Jaden Bead, and I'm the trustee for Big Sky High School. And so just a little bit of a roadmap before I give my report. There's essentially three pieces to my report. The first being a brief overview of what's going on at Big Sky, some more major things that aren't necessarily a piece of the other two pieces. And the other two pieces are MTSS and then athletics and activities. So primarily, and first is our overview. So this week wraps up our worn clothing drive. Big Sky students were asked to donate gently-used clothes, boots, hats, gloves, and new pairs of socks for our Family Resource Center. We also have parent-teacher conferences happening this week of November 16th, and all conferences will be done virtually. And parents can sign up for those on the Big Sky website. In IB, there were 48 student registrations with 123 total exam registrations, which is the highest number of IB exams ever taken in one year at Big Sky. This showcases the academic resilience exemplified by our Eagles. Even in these trying times, Big Sky students are doing everything in their power to achieve a level of academic excellence. Also, to add to that, Big Sky has applied for the Missoula Electric Co-op for $1,500 grant to help scholarship students taking these exams who can't afford the prices to be able to take them. We also have our November Family Engagement Event happening. Families can sign up for a meal plan that will be delivered to their home just in time for the holidays. In this kit, there are all the ingredients needed to make a spaghetti dinner and dessert. Our principal, Jennifer Courtney, also made a video with her own kids showing families how to make the dessert recipe. Stay tuned for more information on the December event that will take place at the MCPs Ag Center and will be open to all Title I schools and families. Big Sky students were also on Montana PBS during the seven o'clock hour showing of How Montanans Voted, analyzing the 2020 election on November 5th. Miss Kind's Zero Period students interviewed several seniors who appeared in a brief segment that night. They made five segments in total, and at least one was shown. That was a short piece on how politics are polarizing our nation. Four seniors were shown in that particular segment with another two having had the opportunity to be in another. There were seven student reporters who all helped in creating these segments. I actually personally watched all of these, all of the segment total, and I thought they did a really amazing job. So I just wanted to highlight that a little bit. And then MCP, as far as NTSS, excuse me, goes. Over the past two months, Big Sky's support staff has been working hard to help our students succeed by encouraging students to take advantage of our zero-period intervention. And I spoke a little bit about it last time, but now we have some data on how it's going. So that zero period runs every day from eight o'clock to 9:30 a.m. and provides students with the opportunity to receive help from staff members and peer tutors in order to complete assignments, create a course of action for getting caught up, and communicating with teachers. Last month, our zero period had been focusing primarily on students who were failing periods one through four. Since this, we have successfully succeeded in helping over 40% of students who were previously failing pass their classes. And now, because of those successes, starting next week, we'll be targeting students who are failing all classes or periods one through eight for the zero-period intervention in hopes of continuing those positive results. And then finally, athletics and activities. Our clubs such as BPA, Student Government, Key Club, NHS, Model UN, and more have begun and are going very well. There's a lot of positive feedback from students that are involved in multiple clubs that meetings being online give them more opportunity to attend more of them. Finding these positives simply show the resilience that our Eagles have. All Activities Advisors are now sharing information in a monthly document that will be sent out to students and families so we know what's happening in clubs like MUN, Student Government, NHS, HOSA, and more. For example, in HOSA, students are choosing competitive events for their state leadership conference in March, and this will continue for the next couple of months. In Model UN, they're participating in their conference this week of, on November 13th. This conference is actually virtual, but students have been also meeting virtually and working independently on their events. In BPA, they have begun meetings, and they are starting to choose and prepare for competitive events and registering for the national conference, or for the regional conference, excuse me, which is in January. NHS has begun their meetings and held a virtual induction ceremony in October. They're also finishing up officer elections this week. And Speech and Debate is continuing to practice this month and prepare for tournaments scheduled to begin in December. They also hope to have a team store set up by the end of the month as a fundraiser with sweatshirts, t-shirts, hats, hats, masks, and more. Finally, and I think this is one of the most important parts of my report today, is that we are incredibly proud of our activities and the community outreach that they're participating in and facilitating while simultaneously following COVID procedures and protocols, especially in this time of need and with the holidays coming up. Some include HOSA, who is sending a personalized postcard to every resident at the Village Assisted Living Facility, wishing them all a happy Thanksgiving. Student Government and our Health Science Academy have teamed up for a winter clothes drive. NHS has begun their first school service project, which is a weekly student parking lot cleanup. And Key Club has made blankets for the Jaden Fred Foundation and taken candy bags for Halloween to the Fort Courage daycare. They also delivered some of these candy bags to our office and library staff. And next, they plan to raise money for Thanksgiving meals for Big Sky and Target Range families, then run a pet food drive, and then a normal food drive in December. So I just wanted to end on this note because I think that it's so amazing how much outreach that the Big Sky activities are doing and are continuing and planning to do moving forward, even with COVID going on. So anyway, that concludes the Big Sky High School report. And once again, thank you for the opportunity to get it.
Thank you, Jaden. It sounds like there's a lot going on at Big Sky and a lot of optimistic things going on at Big Sky. So appreciate your report. And then Malone and Daisy, if you want to unmute. And I don't know who wants to go first, but let's hear what's going on at C.
Yeah, I'll go first. So hi, I'm Daisy Kalina, and I'm from Sentinel High School. So I'll start off with the report, and then Malone will finish it. So good evening and happy November. Once again, I'm Daisy, and I'm here today with my co-trustee, Malone Ingram. At Sentinel, we're on track with our block schedule. And last week, we finished our first quarter, meaning that we're going to start back up with periods one and two, and we're doing that right now. As it gets closer to Thanksgiving, Sentinel students are working hard in preparation for the relaxing break. For our monthly sports update, we want to congratulate our boys' cross-country team for taking state title. Our girls took sixth. Sentinel football will continue playoffs with a semifinal game this Friday at 7:00 p.m. Our boys' soccer team lost a tough game to Bozeman at state semifinals, and our girls' team lost to Bozeman as well in quarterfinals. Our volleyball team lost a tough postgame to Billings West on Saturday, but now we're looking forward to our winter sports like basketball, swimming, and wrestling. And now I'll turn it over to Malone with the rest of our report. Thank you.
Go ahead, Malone. It looks like you're unmuted, so... I don't know if you're having any technical difficulties?
Malone, if you can hear us, you're unmuted, so you can go ahead and speak now. I had a little trouble connecting with Malone earlier. It may be the case that your microphone isn't working on your device tonight, Malone. We can't hear you.
All right, well, if we can't hear Malone, I can finish up the report.
I think that would help us out because...
All right, sounds good. So next, I'll move on to talking about some of our activities that we have going on at Sentinel. So for activities and clubs, they're just as busy as our team sports right now. Speech and Debate has a new member meeting, and that was two weeks ago. And then we've been practicing all of our events. And Speech and Debate will also have a completely virtual tournament scheduled this season. So we're preparing for that. And Speech and Debate is going, we have our first tournament on December 4th and 5th. Model UN has been busy writing position papers and learning about different countries around the world. Model UN will have its first conference this Friday, and then that will also be taking place virtually. HOSA had its Fall Leadership Conference on November 6th, and HOSA is launching a project to write 1,000 thank you letters to first responders. Student Government is working on the Class of 2020 Legacy Project and will be ordering seniors' shirts for the graduating class. Our newspaper, The Spartan Scoop, is working on publishing its next edition. And Key Club Amnesty International, among with other clubs, are meeting weekly, and most of them are meeting virtually. A representative from the district office came to interview different club leaders and welcome new incoming freshmen this year. And other news, the ACT and PSAT testings have all wrapped up for the fall. Seniors are excited to order their caps and gowns and submit their senior photos for this coming weeks. So thank you so much for your time tonight, and we look forward from hearing from the other trustees.
Thank you, Daisy. And Malone, thank you for being there. Sorry, we weren't able to hear your report, but thanks for pinch hitting, Daisy. We appreciate hearing everything that's going on at Sentinel as well. And then it looks like Claire is here from Seeley Swan High School. I know Eric was here at the last meeting. So Claire, if you want to go ahead and give us the report for Seeley Swan, and if you can just identify yourself by first and last name. And I've already said Seeley Swan twice, so I think we're good with that.
Yes, of course. Good evening, everyone. Yes, usually Eric is here with me, but tonight he had to help a friend get a deer out, so he won't be able to attend. So I will do the report by myself, and he's sorry not to make it. At SSHS, actually, first off, in case you don't know me, my name is Claire. At SSHS, actually, first off, in case you don't know me, my name is Claire Kovach, and I'm a student trustee at Sealy Swan High School. So at SSHS, these last couple of weeks, activities have slowed down a little bit as we wrapped up our fall sports. Our girls' cross-country team finished the year placing second at state. The conditions were really cold this year, but we are super proud of their achievement. Our Lady Blackhawks volleyball team were district champions this year, but we lost out at divisionals in a tight game. Sport banquet for football, volleyball, and cross-country will be held at the end of the month. With the arrival of more snow, we welcome the beginning of winter sports. Dryland training for cross-country skiing starts on Wednesday, and basketball practice doesn't start till December, but the athletes are ready to go. In the science classroom, students are being challenged to work with their hands. The physics class used the Makerspace card to create battery-powered projects and catapults, and students in biology just finished building their three-D models of atoms as well. If you would be interested in seeing photos, I have some photos from the science teacher. Building Trade Two has been busy building small projects to benefit our school. For example, they built walls for the referee locker room to add a little bit of privacy for our hard-working refs. On a Saturday note, on Sunday afternoon, there was a tragic car accident, which resulted in the death of a student and former student of Sealy Swan. In a small school like SSHS, everyone knows each other, and this has been very hard for many of our students. Fortunately, staff has been available for our students to talk to, along with a therapist from Missoula. This is just a brisk reminder to drive safely as winter approaches and to appreciate our friends, family, and loved ones. So thank you for the support from Missoula, and that is all we have to report on.
Thank you, Claire, and give our condolences to everyone at Sealy Swan High School. So sorry to hear about the loss. And then I don't know if Mariposa is on. I don't know. She might be on a computer that has a name different than hers. So she's our Willard student trustee, so I'll give her a second to indicate that she's here, if she is. I'm not seeing anyone unmuting Hatton. So then we'll move on to Waverly from Hellgate High School. So Waverly, if you can introduce yourself, and once again, I've said Hellgate High School, so go ahead and give us your report.
Waverly, if you can hear us, we are ready for your report. I did. Um, I don't know why this guy is doing that. Let's see what's happening. Okay, I'll get this back in. It's just gonna take me a second. Waverly, if you can hear us, you can go ahead and give your report. Oh, Grace is indicating they can hear on Zoom. Um, shoot, actually. I think if I do this, Waverly, why don't you go ahead? And give your report, and we're gonna try it now.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Great. Hello, I'm Waverly, and I'm the student trustee from Hellgate High School. And just, we just ended our first quarters of our block schedule, and we're heading into our second quarter. And fall sports have come to an end. Volleyball made it to the playoffs, but unfortunately didn't move on to state. Football unfortunately lost in a very snowy game and did not move on to the playoffs. Cross-country boys and girls got second place at state in Calisville. And girls' soccer, for the first time in Hellgate history, made it to the semifinal game and unfortunately lost against Helena High. Boys' soccer won the state championship, and it's the fifth one over the six, these last six years. And winter sports, basketball, wrestling, and swimming, will begin tryouts and practicing soon, but won't have their first games and meets until January. Save BPS, NHS, MMUN, HOSA, and Key Club continue to work on new projects and adapting the new COVID restrictions. Speech and Debate are starting up to get, starting to get up and running and have had their first meeting, welcoming new and old members. Student Government is working on a document with all the clubs' information and small description of all the clubs that will be easily accessible for all students and staff members. And Student Government is also working on the November activity for the entire student body to participate. And Student Government is also working on two Thanksgiving meals that will be given to two families at Hellgate. Seniors and counselors are working hard with finishing up their college applications and applying to colleges. Hellgate staff and students are doing great with the new norm. Under the circumstances, the Hellgate community is having a great positive attitude and making the best out of everything that has been thrown at us so far this year. We thank all the Hellgate staff for their amazing work to support all the students. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just gonna do a little bit of a mute here, so we don't get echoes.
Okay, thanks, Waverly. Sorry. At some point in the near future, we'll be moving into a new boardroom with better technology, so we're hoping some of these glitches will eventually disappear. But thank you for your patience, all student trustees. We really appreciate it. And then we move on, on the agenda, to announcements from Dr. Watson, the superintendent.
Oh, sorry. I'm just getting a message from Grace on Zoom that they are not able to hear us. I'm just gonna problem solve. Oops, this is why.
Trustee Decker, if you just want to let Hatton know if you can hear us in chat, then I'll continue to go ahead. Okay, okay, so we're moving on to announcements from Dr. Watson, the superintendent. Dr. Watson?
All right. I hope everyone can hear me on Zoom. Just three things this evening. Number one, as Chair Holland said, we are moving into our new building. It's been a kind of a slow process over the last few weeks, and we've got one more week of that. So the end of this week, hopefully, the last of us will be out of the the old administration building and will be moved over to the new administration building, and that includes the boardroom in the new administration building, hoping to have our December meeting hosted there in the new boardroom, depending on, you know, all the technology getting in the right place. So that's our hope. I also have two announcements this evening regarding some staff that I just wanted to share with the board. I thought, you know, we don't often get a chance to celebrate staff. I know that we have an outstanding staff, and a lot of them get awards all over the district. So sometimes I don't find out about all the awards that our staff receives, but here's two of them that I had found out about, and I just wanted to share with the board, because they're both really good stories. So the first one that I wanted to announce, Ty Williams, who's a special education teacher at Hawthorne, received the Voya Unsung Hero Award, and she also received a grant with this award to buy special education literacy materials. And the way she describes it is, the title of this is "Everyone Gets to Read." It focuses on providing research-based programmings for students with special needs. Through the specialized programs like Early Literacy Skills Builder and Early Reading Skills Builder, students will be exposed to the techniques and strategies proven to be effective for students with special needs. So I thought that was great that Ty was recognized as an unsung hero, and I thought it was really important that the board knew about that. The second one, just a little bit of pre-celebration of Veterans Day tomorrow. We had a staff member that received a very special award from a local group. So the Veterans of Foreign Affairs of the United States of America has presented Kristin Schechner with the National Citizenship Education Teacher Post Recognition Award in recognition for promoting citizenship education in her classroom and in the school. Kristin is a teacher at Russell School, a music teacher at Russell School. This award was given to Mrs. Z because of her creation of the first-grade Veterans Day concert that she's produced for the last few years at Russell School. In addition, she encourages her Russell students to donate socks for local veterans, invite local veterans to the ceremony, as well as write letters to local veterans. So appreciate all that Mrs. Schechner is doing at Russell, and I know that the local veterans appreciate her as well, because they gave her this award. So thank you for allowing me just to share those, too. Oh, I think, and I think Mrs. Schechner is actually on the Zoom. Not that she, not that she knew I was gonna say this tonight, but I think she's on the Zoom. So if you want to give her a little clap, you certainly can. Yes, thank you. What Chair Holland pointed out, one other thing. So our second November meeting would normally fall that week of Thanksgiving, and so I've asked Chair Holland to move that to November nineteenth, which is next Thursday, for a six o'clock meeting. So hopefully, we can get a quorum of the board for that evening.
Thanks. And then we move on to eight, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a mechanism by which routine and perfunctory items can be handled by the board. It means that the board won't have any board discussion about the item or items on the consent agenda, although we do take public comment. And also, any board member who wants to have a more robust discussion about an item can ask that it be taken off the consent agenda at any time, before the meeting, or at the beginning of the meeting, or even now. And so with that, there's one item, and it's a K-12 action item, because I think all the students who are listed are not high school students. So it is to acknowledge the MCPS student attendance agreements, and it's found on page thirty. And so any question, any motion to approve the item on the consent agenda from a trustee? Moved by trustee Oldperson and seconded by trustee Abgaris. As I indicated, we won't take any board comment. Is there any public comment? I'm not seeing any Hatton. Okay, and so all K-12 trustees in favor of the motion to approve the item on the consent agenda, please indicate by raising your hand, and I'll look to see Grace. Sorry, Grace, I've switched. And who else has?
Grace and Vicki. I don't see...
Is Vicki? Oh, I didn't see Vicki. So trustee McDonald is now here. So that appears to have passed unanimously as to all K-12 trustees present at this meeting. And then we move on to suburban shopping. So Pat, if you want to let us know what's going up, going on up in Sealy, and maybe it's about time that they have a more reliable vehicle.
Yes, thank you. So it's been a while since we've talked about this vehicle in Sealy, and I haven't been here long enough to talk about it. So Sealy Lake has a Suburban that's close to twenty years old with twenty-two-hundred-plus-thousand miles on it. This vehicle is used by a number of sports teams, as referenced in the background section, golf, track, cross-country. It's also used by staff to attend district meetings. It's used for field trips. It's used by leadership for attending meetings and also by the maintenance and custodial staff to pick up supplies. And as Chair Holland mentioned, it's time for it to be replaced. The proposed funding of the purchase of the vehicle would come from two sources. One would be some funds that were, we were able to reserve, some Sealy Lake discretionary funds that we were able to reserve from last year, and then from an intercap loan. An intercap loan is available to public entities like schools through the state, and it's a variable interest rate loan, and currently that rates at two and a half percent. So we could finance between twenty and thirty thousand the excess purchase cost with that loan. The monthly obligation would be between a hundred and sixty-seven dollars and five hundred and thirty dollars, depending on whether we do a ten-year amortization or a five-year, and whether we go with twenty or thirty thousand. So we're in that range. It's fortunate that Sealy has a balance to apply against the purchase price. We anticipate the cost to be between fifty and sixty thousand dollars, and principal, the Kellen, the principal in Sealy's already been doing some looking and comparing prices. So the request is to have permission from the board to enter into an intercap loan for that, those additional funds to make this purchase happen. Happy to entertain questions.
Any questions for Pat first? I'm just checking. I'm not seeing any, I don't think. Okay, so the recommendation is that the trustees approve the purchase of a replacement vehicle for Sealy Swan High School and use an intercap loan of up to thirty thousand dollars to fund the purchase in the mechanism that Pat just described. Is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Abgaris. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Hobins. Is there any board discussion? I'll just throw out that it seems quite overtimely to make sure that we're, you know, making sure everyone's safe up in Sealy. So thanks to Kellen for bringing it to your attention and you for bringing it to our attention. Is there any public comment? Okay, all trustees in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying yes or raising your hand. I'll say yes. Okay, and it looks like it's unanimous as to all trustees present. Did Vicki? Okay, thank you. Trustee McDonald also. So thanks. And then we move on. The next four items are items that were on an earlier agenda, but because of the length of that particular board meeting, we tabled them and we're bringing them back to you. As the board members will recall, and the public will recall, last, at last board member, we got an update on the general fund budget, and now we're getting updates, or I mean, sorry, on the the bond updates, and now we're getting updates on the general fund, technology fund, transportation fund, and building reserve fund. So it's going to be the Pat Show for a little bit, but I'll turn it over to Pat. And as you'll see, these are all information-only items, but for the public and board members, we ask to, on some kind of consistent, regular basis, find out how we're managing the various funding sources for things in the district. So we really appreciate Pat and his office in Burley and everyone, and, you know, the tech folks for all putting together this information to share with us and the public. So go ahead, Pat.
Yeah, thank you. So buckle up for the fund updates. First, I'll start on page thirty-one with the general fund. And the general fund, this first update reflects expenditures through last fiscal year, so that ran July one through June thirty of 2020. And as, as you all know, our year was cut short as a result of the emergency closures resulting from the COVID pandemic. And as a result, we experienced a number of budgetary or expenditure savings within the general fund, items like supplies, substitutes, utilities, activity, athletic costs, that type of thing. And with that in mind, what we attempted to do with year-end funds was to preserve those funds as best as possible, as best as we possibly could. The, there really isn't a mechanism within the general fund to preserve dollars. The general fund's more of an expenditure fund. And so what we did is, is to move expenditures between funds. So we moved expenditures to the general fund, and then we also moved balances, general fund balances, to the multi-district agreement. And this was something we talked with the board about in, back in June. So on page thirty-one, I'll actually start at the bottom, which will be a little bit unconventional, but it'll explain or help explain some of the variances in expenditures and budgets from up above. So if you go to page thirty-one and you look at the bottom, we're identifying available resources in the effort to preserve year-end funds. And you'll see on the elementary... And you'll see on the elementary side that we're recognizing a little over 850,000 of budget amendment dollars. Just wanted to point out that about half those funds were a result of the TIF remittance that flowed through our our reserve account. And then excess general fund budget of about of a million four. On the high school, it was 680,000 of additional excess general fund dollars. So how did we preserve these these resources? You'll see that that explained down below. First, the retrofitting of school buses with seat belts. And this was contemplated as part of the budget amendment and also contemplated a little over a year ago when when the board considered the the effort to house our equip our buses with with seat belts. And so these expenditures, the 220 elementary and the 130K high school represent the the cost to retrofit 30 buses at $11,700 per bus. So these were the buses that were already owned, not the new purchase, newly purchased buses. And then you'll see there's some equipment purchases, both teaching and learning, K-5 manipulatives, O and M equipment, and fine arts instruments. Those were contemplated as purchases from the budget amendment. Then you'll see the cover indirect cost expenditures with the general fund. What this reflects is we receive indirect cost reimbursement from some of our federal grants to the tune of about 2%. It's not very much. It's reflective of how much salaries we have in our business department to administer these grants. We use some of those funds to cover salary costs or part of salary costs. And so what we did here is is we moved those expenditures to the general fund. And in doing so, we preserved those indirect cost resources, which we can carry over from year to year. And and that'll be a common theme as we as we talk about these year-end preservation ideas. For your reference, we receive about 113,000 in indirect cost revenue in the elementary and about 93,000 in the high school. Next, we we show a transfer to the compensated absences fund. This is a separate fund that's only funded with year-end type transfers. These dollars can be used to cover severance costs for non-certified staff. So the only way to build up those funds is to actually make a transfer, and that's what this is accomplishing here. It'll also have the effect of of potentially helping our budget in the future because these funds can be used to to offset severance costs. Next, there's cover Medicaid MAC billing expenditures with the general fund. With any of our billing to Medicaid, we, like like the this billing, this is actually referred to as random moments. So certain points in time during the year where Medicaid will track efforts at providing services to Medicaid-eligible students. The reimbursement annually isn't too significant. In the elementary, it's about 59,000, and the high school, 39,000. But we do commit about 65,000 of salary within our general fund budget and so or within these this this funding source. And and here we moved that expenditure to the general fund and preserved preserve these funds, which we can carry forward and continue to provide support in a variety of areas in the school district. Next, you'll see we covered food service expenditures with the general fund, 40,000 in the elementary and 200,000 in the high school. This is this is a fairly consistent pattern where we're helping with with our fund balance in the in the food service program. It's not necessarily, so what we'll do is move expenditures that are typically covered within the food service program to the general fund and then thereby preserve some fund balance in the food service program to help help maintain a positive fund balance, which is what we strive to do for auditor purposes and audit purposes. Next, transfer unexpended school building funds to the multi-district agreement. So the multi-district agreement, we've talked before about, this is an agreement between the elementary and the high school district. It's a statutory statutory mechanism that allows us to transfer funds and carry forward those funds in an intra-local agreement through this multi-district agreement. And so here, the schools themselves have unexpended resources that they typically use, as I mentioned, for field trips, for athletics, for supplies. To the extent they could, they were able to preserve those funds. And you'll see 12,000 was preserved K-8 and about 84,000 in the high school. And as mentioned before, that's where Sealy gets about 30,000 to apply towards this suburban purchase. Next, there's cover Medicaid direct billing expenditures. It's it's much like the MAC billing up above, only at a higher level. And you'll see the dollars there are at a greater extent. So that level of expenditure was moved to the general fund, thereby preserving some balance in our direct billing funds. And for your reference, the balance, let's see, is 728,000 in the elementary and about 400,000 in the high school. So it's an area where we've able we've been able to preserve some balance. And this this helps offset a variety of expenditures, including when we have additional staffing needs in our special education department. You'll then see that we've covered some the staff supply expenditures typically covered with our rental proceeds. We we put those in the general fund. We we operate the rental of gyms and facilities. And we do cover some expenses in an effort to at least break even when we rent our facilities. So we, by moving those expenses to the general fund, we've we've preserved some funds to help offset costs associated with our floor repairs, with basketball, volleyball standards, and that type of thing. With fields, it's with maintenance of the fields, fertilizer and whatnot. Building reserve expenditures, here we move some of those expenditures to the general fund and really positively restoring building reserve funds. We don't currently have a levy, so it's a good area to build up some some funds to to provide maintenance and equipment purchases. The next is athletic expenditures. We cover here in the general fund, these are funds that are expenditures typically covered with participation fees. This directly benefits our high schools. They're able to preserve some funds to help offset uniform purchases, athletic equipment purchases, and that type of thing. And then finally, there's a net transfer of the remaining fund balance to the multi-district agreement. And that transfer will provide about 600,000 of support for for ongoing expenses as the as they come due. And so that represents the full balance in that multi-district agreement. It's that's the first, in addition to the amount related to the billing. So the working backwards like that, it sort of gives us an idea of the expenditures we moved into the general fund. And before I walk through a few items of expenditure line item items, expenditure line items, are there any questions anyone has about those, that recap of the funds that are preserved?
Sorry, our hi-tech sound equipment requires one person to turn off their mic before the other person can turn on their mic. Are there any questions from trustees about their report so far? And I'm looking to see if there's any hands up. I don't think I see any hands up with trustees attending via Zoom. So it looks like we're ready to go ahead.
Sounds good. So I'll I'll briefly go through a few line items from from up from the upper half of this report. As you work down the expenditure categories on the left side, first, I'd point out under athletic trainers, equipment managers' salaries, this is object code 116. It's the second column has the three-digit object code. In in 116, you'll see expenditures of 40,000 on the elementary and 270 on the high school. This is where the food service support was provided. So food service expenditures were moved into this this object code here. That's why those expenditures are weighing above the 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 level of budget. Going down a few more lines, substitute salaries. You'll, I just want to point out that even though the expenditures were close to budget, the savings were actually greater because we usually are way over budget in substitutes. So for example, in 2019 on the elementary, our substitute expenditure was $700,000, which here is a difference of 250,000. So that added to that that general fund balance. And then on the high school substitutes, similarly, the expenditure 284 in 2020 was was 450, 442,000 in in 2019. That's a that's a savings of 100 or difference of 160,000. Down near the the bottom, overtime salaries, really just pointing that out that that's still an area for us to work on. It's a it's an expenditure item that's been growing, partly because of the difficulty in getting custodial subs. And so we've been paying a lot of overtime to to support our buildings because we have some serious difficulty in with custodial subs. And then we have professional extra salaries. That line item is is for, really, it's curriculum pay for certified staff. And it's it's pretty consistent with where it's been in the past, maybe a little bit a little bit higher on the high school side. The excess sick leave, this this line item is also a little bit higher than we've seen in the past. What this reflects is both severance payment for excess sick leave and annual payment for excess sick leave. So this is accumulations by our various bargaining groups of leave in excess of a maximum accumulation. So that's paid out at a reduced rate. Vacation term pay and sick term pay, that's that's really reflective. The vacation term pay is for some of our 10-month staff who are able to cash out vacation time to help offset the summer obligations. And then sick term pay is is really a severance line item. And that that item is up compared to the prior year in both the elementary and the high school, as we experienced a a number of additional retirees, a few more than normal on the certified side. Working down the line item, just under total benefits, you'll see a 4.6 million elementary, 3.2 high school. That's that's our work comp coverage and our health insurance. And the health insurance in the elementary makes up the bulk of that 4.6 million expenditure. It's it's 4.4 million. And the health health insurance expenditure in the high school is just over 3 million. Contracted services. The 727,000 expenditure in the elementary, that's primarily the our CROs and our preschool. So we, the preschool is separately listed as a line item because it's not necessarily a funded. It's it is funded through the general fund, but it's it's listed separately because we track it separately. So that that's listed here under contracted services, even though the it represents primarily the payment for our certified staff that works in the in the Jefferson Building. I'll point out that also under contracted services is our election cost. And for 2020, we had no election costs. We didn't run an election. So that was a budgetary savings of 50,000 elementary and a little over 20,000 in the high school. Utilities represented a pretty significant savings of about 230,000 in the for for gas alone in the elementary. And on the high school is about 215,000 for gas and 120,000 for for electric. Let's see, the repair and maintenance service, these expenses are quite a bit higher than budget. And it's because we moved some of those building reserve type expenditures here for elevator maintenance, snow removal, and some school-related maintenance type items. Field trips and student travel costs, the the excess here is related to seat belts. Certainly, in the elementary, you see the budget of 11,000, and we expended 221. Seat belts were 220, were represented 215,000 in the in the elementary and 129 on the high school. So that's that's the the cause of the variance there between budget and actual expenditures. And then just kind of moving down, supplies, equipment, software. This this is a large expenditure area, as you can see. Just to break it down, the bulk of the expenditures are in supplies. And we allocate a significant budget to all of the the buildings. Not not significant individually, but in total for supply purchases. And then we had a teaching and learning adoption and book purchase, library purchase that made up the the large chunk of that amount in the elementary of about about 500,000. And and part of a tech purchase for the teaching and learning software was also incorporated here in this expenditure. And then finally, construction services. So when we moved some building reserve expenditures, elementary 162,000 and and high school 385, that's that's how we were able to preserve some of those funds in the building reserve. So that's a that's a big deal for the district. Then under dues and fees, it looks very different as compared to normal. And and the reason is that under dues, the dues are only 34,000 and fees are 41,000 in the elementary. But we included a budget, a control account under this area for the budget amendment and then for for position savings. So the budget amendment of 854,000 and the position savings of 200,000 were all reflected here. And then that expenditure was then allocated up above in the various other categories. And then finally, the operating transfer to other funds, 1.4 million in the elementary. That's the compensated absences transfer of 75,000. The 12,449 transfer to the multi-district agreement from the building, from the elementary. And then the $1.2 million transfer from the district. So that makes up that balance there. And then the 75,000 compensated absence amount that's that I mentioned before. So it's it's a it's a one-page summary of a year's worth of expenditures. And then a pretty active year end happening. Dr. Watson and Dan Parrish and I spent quite a bit of time working through the year-end puzzle and and trying to do our best to preserve some funds for for the school. So that's that's really what's reflected there. That's really it with the general fund year-end recap. The the next item is the is the expenditures through September. And not surprisingly, there's there's not as as much to report. The I I think what's sort of interesting to point out is that our our salary, and this is on page 32, but our, I'm sorry, not on page 32, but on page 33. Yeah. So the main thing I wanted to point out is that even though this is the first quarter of the year, you're not going to see under a lot of the salary line items, a quarter of the budget being expended. And that's because we only had one payroll, which was in August. expended, and that's because we only had one payroll, which was in August, and so we make up for that budget with our fourth-quarter expenditures because we'll have triple checks at the end of June, so that variance will exist throughout the year. And then really, the only two other items to point out is, one, the insurance property life, it's under the five-twenty object code, it's our property liability insurance, that's our only expenditure we really upfront pay into our pool, we're part of a pool for property liability insurance for school districts. And then in-service travel, that really represents PD, so it's part of a teaching and learning adoption and part of the PD obligation that makes up the bulk of that expenditure. Otherwise, the expenditures are what you would expect for the first quarter of the year, so that's sort of the general fund update.
Thanks, any questions from any trustees? I'll check on Zoom. Okay, so it looks, this is for information only, I didn't know if there's any public comment? Okay, then the next agenda item is an update on the technology funds, which begins on page forty-one with attachments to the agenda.
All right, thank you, so unlike the general fund, the technology fund is a fund that we can carry forward funds from one year to the next, and so really, as you look at the expenditures through June thirty, 2020, the bulk of the budget was established in minor equipment, which makes sense, that's our computer and device equipment replacement, as well as in software, and you can see the, it's not unusual to see the budget to actual vary, and when it does, a lot of times it means the next year there'll be additional expenditures there, a lot of times purchases that are made are encumbered, like they are here, you'll see a hundred-and-forty thousand of equipment was encumbered, but it may not have been received until after the end of the year, so it'll get expended in the next fiscal year potentially, and the, otherwise, the elementary, what I'd point out is we re-appropriated three-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, it's not evident from this report here, but three-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand was re-appropriated for this fiscal year from FY twenty. Otherwise, the report's pretty basic in representing the expenditures which fall into those two main categories, plus some salaries, plus some professional contracted services, so. And then maybe the high school, I'll just cover that one quickly, the, like the elementary, this is on page thirty-nine, no, it's not, it's on forty-two, thank you, so we re-appropriated about seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand, which is pretty significant, that means that represents funds unexpended in the high school that will roll over to this year, to FY twenty-one. As a comparison, the year before, we re-appropriated five-hundred-and-twelve thousand, those funds get reallocated for purchases, and the technology department and technology fund will be used pretty extensively to make equipment purchases this fiscal year, and in addition, we'll be in the process of implementing our Infinite Campus software, new student information software, so you'll see that also reflected in the software budget for both the elementary and the high schools. That was all I had to report on the tech fund.
Any questions from any trustees, trustee Evguerras?
Thank you, a quick question, the Chromebooks, I believe, that we ordered and that we were waiting for, did those ever show up, I'm assuming that's in here, but did those ever show up?
You know, they typically would appear here, but we're going to be paying for the bulk of them with, some of them with tech fund, but some of them with CARES Act fund, and I don't know that they have shown up, Dr. Watson, do you know?
Yeah.
I haven't seen a bunch of boxes in the recycling center, so I think.
Any other questions from any trustees? I have one question, Pat, could you explain what encumbrance means, just you used the term a few times, and I think it would be helpful for us to all understand what that means.
Yeah, you bet, sorry, that represents a purchase that we put into the system, we encumber the funds, that's why it's called an encumbrance, and it'll appear under that column prior to receipt of the funds when we can move it to an expenditure column, so it's something we'll enter a purchase order for, and our accounting software is intended to function that way so we can track not only expenditures that have happened, but ones that are waiting to happen, so we don't over-expand ourselves.
Any other questions, trustee Mercer?
So, like on the high school one, I heard you say that you had carried over like seven-hundred thousand, but that's different than the eight-twenty-nine or whatever that's showing, I guess it's, or is that included in the budget as of nine-thirty, or is that elsewhere?
Yeah, so it's built into the budget for the FY twenty-one year, so if we go back and look at the budget we adopted or the board adopted in August, we'll see the fund balance re-appropriated plus the levy of eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand to establish our budget, it's not appearing in this document, and I just, Dan Parrish and I were just talking about that, is that it's, this report doesn't track very well to the fund balance re-appropriated, and I think the MUNA software system is capable of doing that, we just haven't taken the time to make that happen, but I think it would be nice to add that feature to this.
Any other questions from any trustees, I'm looking on Zoom, I don't see any hands up, do you, no, okay, and so the next report, sorry, let me just put them back to the agenda, is the transportation fund update, beginning on page forty-five.
All right, thank you, so page forty-five reflects the year-end for both the elementary and the high school, and this is our permissive levy, this is the fund that we use to cover to and from transportation, the primary expenditure is to our transportation company, Beach Transportation, and so if you look down the left side under expenditures, you'll see under transportation with the object code five XX, those expenditures really reflect, the budget and expenditures reflect our payment to Beach Transportation for those services. I think what's interesting, given the shortened school year, is the comparison to last year, so last year, in the elementary, we expended four, a little over four million dollars, and this year we're at about three-hundred-and-eighty thousand, so a difference of two-sixty-four on the elementary, and then on the high school, last year we expended about two-point-one million, and here we're close to two million, a difference of a hundred-and-eight thousand, so despite the shutdown of our schools and transportation, we still paid within three-hundred-and-seventy thousand of that transportation cost for to and from transportation, and part of it was the, our agreement with Beach to pick up about seventy percent of that cost, just because that was a commitment that they make to transport our kids for a hundred-and-eighty days according to our calendar, and so they have significant capital and staff investment, so we didn't want the staff in particular to be adversely affected by our shutdown, so that's why that number is very close. And then on page forty-six, you'll see the through September expenditures, and not what you would, it's expected, except for the transportation expenditures are really low, and that just really relates to our billing cycle, so we likely paid a pretty sizable bill here after this report was completed, but, so when we, when we'll run our next quarterly report, you'll see that that adjustment's made, and in fact, I know that's what the case is, we ran a, paid a bill in October, so, otherwise, just sort of kicking off the transportation fund on page forty-six.
Any questions for Pat, trustee Mercer?
Is the different busing schedule with the different school days costing us anything?
You know, it's a piece that we haven't completely negotiated, well, we haven't negotiated with Beach, and so what I can say is that we typically run ninety-four routes, and with the revised schedule, we're running seventy-eight routes, and despite the fewer routes, though, we are picking up additional hours per route to accommodate, in particular, the high school schedule, so it works out to be close to a wash, but we do want to have a conversation with Beach about the Mondays and some of the other pieces that aren't happening, so that'll probably be in front of the board here soon.
Thanks, just kind of a general question here, is there, I know there's not a budget, but is there an expenditure report for the CARES Act money that we're using, where we're using it, how much we've used, all of that, is there a report that relates to that?
Not in this packet, but it's forthcoming, so, and just as a reminder, we have two relief funds, COVID relief funds, we have one that was distributed to us through the governor's office, and those funds were distributed in full, and the expenditure requirement is December thirty for those funds, and right now, we're on track to expend all those funds, which total about three-point-nine million dollars. The CARES Act funds are available for use and are funds that we request reimbursement from OPI, and those are largely unexpended at this point because we're waiting to use those in the second half when these first set of funds run out, those are, those funds are about a million-five elementary and seven-hundred thousand high school, and we would also stand to expend those funds, but we'll get a, we'll get a report put together for those, both those funds.
Trustee, old person?
For the transportation report, are you able to break it down on what is the extracurricular, how much that costs, because I just think equitable, looking at what we just approved for Sealy Swan, the suburban, and what we spent here in the city, I think we should really see what is equitable for all of our schools.
Yeah, and it's a great question, because this transportation fund doesn't cover athletics, so it only covers to and from school, and so the report to look at is when we do our general fund report, like the one we just walked through, there's a line item that's student travel costs, and for 2020, the expenditure there was five-hundred-and-nine thousand, now part of it was inflated for seat belts, but we typically expand three to four hundred thousand for not just transportation, but room and board and that type of obligation for all of our activities and athletics, and it's a line item that we will point out from time to time because it's typically one of those expenditures that goes over each year, we see it go over each year, but that's where we could go look at it.
Any other questions? I think you might have answered my question, but did the funding for the seat belts come out of the general fund and not in transportation?
Yeah, so we expended it in the general fund, using the budget amendment on the elementary side, and it did not hit the transportation fund, so the portion of that budget amendment that was funded with the TIF remittance, the four-hundred thousand, really had the effect of reducing taxpayer costs because we used TIF remittances to make that happen, so that was a positive outcome for our tax levies.
Thanks, any other questions, I'm just looking, not okay, any public comment? Not seeing any blue hands raised, so we move on to the next report, which is the building reserve fund update, and Pat, can you just remind us, what does building reserve fund mean, what does that cover first, so that we have a sense of the bigger picture before we talk about the details?
So the building reserve is for maintenance and equipment purchases, and we've historically had building reserve levies in our elementary and high school district, and all of those levies have termed out, they all were for a specific term, and they've expired, and the elementary had two going at once, one was five-hundred thousand, one was three-seventy-six, and I want to say the three-seventy-six was the last in the elementary to expire, probably four years ago, and the high school levy expired two-plus years ago, I have a horrible judge of time anymore, but, so we've been operating without that levy, which, as mentioned, supports equipment replacement for operations and maintenance, and it covers maintenance costs, roof repair and the like, we've been tackling a lot of projects with the bond, and, but at some point, those expenditures, those routine maintenance expenditures will need to be picked up by a building reserve type of levy, so those are the types of expenditures, and I think as you can see from the report, there aren't a lot of expenditures coming out of the building reserve, and maybe I could just jump to the report if that makes sense, and page forty-seven, we talked about the fact that the general fund picked up some building reserve expenditures, helped preserve the building reserve, and that's what you see here, all those parenthetical numbers are all expenditures that have been moved to the general fund, and so the total of all those parenthetical credits is thirty-six thousand for this report, so the building reserve was to the good thirty-six thousand from this report. In total, we moved a hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand building reserve expenditures to the general fund, and the other portion related to building reserve carryover, which is something that the board controls. The high school is similar, you'll see all those credit numbers, that's where we moved about thirty-four thousand of expenditures this quarter to the general fund, and preserved in total sixty-seven thousand of these day-to-day operation-type expenditures, and three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand of building reserve carryover in the high school, so both those funds can be used, all of those funds totaling four-hundred-and-fifty thousand can be used in support of maintenance and equipment-type purchases, hopefully, you know, extending out our ability to maintain our facility without going out to a levy. Pages forty-nine and fifty are quarterly expenditures, and it's almost to the comical point in terms of a recap, just a full quarter of expenditures that are totaling, you know, nineteen hundred dollars and ninety-four hundred dollars, so we'll continue to report those out in the building reserve, but not a lot of expenditures hitting the building reserve at this point.
Sorry, any questions for Pat? I'm not seeing any in the boardroom. I'm not seeing any in the boardroom. Let's, I'll double check on Zoom. Not seeing any, any public comment. It's information only, but, okay. Well, thanks, Pat. Thanks for all those updates. And now we move on to B one, which is to approve a stipend for early notification of retirement. Dave, we see this every year. Some, some of us thought it was a little early, but you explained that it's not really early. A lot of people are making their planning decisions to make those decisions by December thirty-first. So that's why we're seeing it now. So anything of note or anything to explain about it?
I'm without, oh, there we go. No, other than it to remind everybody, it's not a retirement incentive. It's a notification incentive. And by doing this, by setting a February twenty-eighth deadline, it really helps us plan our staffing and our budgeting for the next year. It lets us get a jump on hiring earlier and get ahead of other districts. So it hopefully incentivizes some of the employees to notify us a bit earlier about their, their plans so we can get ahead of the game.
Sorry. Recommendation is that the trustees approve a stipend of five hundred dollars less appropriate deductions for early notification of retirement to be received in the human resources office no later than February twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one at four P M. Is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Agarres. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Old Person. Is there any board discussion? Don't see any. I'll just make one comment. We've talked in the past about perhaps a bigger stipend would help early notification. And the conversation has already always circled back that this seems to be just the right tipping point to get people to give early or give early notification. And it's been working pretty effectively for the last several years. Is that fair? I see you nodding. So I just wanted to say that I appreciate that we're, this model is working so that it really helps with budgeting, budgeting, decision-making about which retirements are going to be taking place as early in the fiscal, or, you know, early in the fiscal years we want to move it. So it's February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Is there any public comment? Okay. So all trustees in favor of the motion to approve a stipend of five hundred dollars less deductions for early notification of retirement to be received no later than February twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one at four P M., please indicate by saying yes or raising your hand. It's, hands are all raised in the boardroom and I'm looking. And I see trustee Service and trustee Decker. So that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Trustee Wake. Sorry, trustee Wake. You're right in the very top of my screen. I should have seen you first. And now we move on to the personnel report. It's attached beginning on page fifty-one. It's a routine personnel report that we see. What period of time does this cover, Dave?
This would cover from the last month than we do. We try to run these once a month to update our, all of our hires.
Yeah, I just oftentimes it seems it identifies which month we're talking about. So this, this is for last month. Okay. So any questions for Dave? We don't talk about specific individuals on the personnel report, but if you have general questions, please feel free to seek clarification. See none. Then is there a motion to approve the items on the personnel report that's attached to the agenda? Moved by trustee Agarres. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Old Person. Is there any board discussion? And again, we don't talk about individuals on the report, just any general discussion? See none. Any public comment? And again, the same caveat applies? Okay, see none. Then all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the items on the personnel report, please indicate either saying yes or raising your hand. Guess raising your hand is the better function. It looks like, I can't see trustee McDonald, so it, oh, I see it now. She just popped up. So it looks like it's unanimous as to all trustees present. And with that, as I explained at the beginning, we'll take public comment on any non-agenda item at this point, as we do also at the beginning of the meeting with the same kind of general protocols in place. Then after that, we'll move into the work session. And as I also indicated at the beginning of the meeting, at any time we're going to take any action, including any action concerning the school schedule, decision-making concerning hybrid, hybrid plus, that as an action item, we will certainly take public comment then. But if anyone wants to make public comment on any item right now that we haven't discussed yet, we would also take public comment at this point. And it looks like Mr. Shear has his hand up. Go ahead, Mr. Shear. And if you can spell your first and last name. Thanks.
Thank you. My name is Ezra Shearer, E Z R A S H E A R E R. This comment is in response to the previous board discussion regarding the lease of the former administration building, the Sixth Street Building. I would just like to encourage the board to really think about the, that property and what we are going to use that for in the long term as a community. If we are not able to lease that building because it's hard to lease it, then I would encourage a board to look at a sale of that property. And so that way we could at least get property taxes generated and not have to incur the cost of keeping the building. It also, if we just sit on that, that building as it is in the center of downtown Missoula for ten, twenty, thirty years until we actually have the money to make it a usable space, that seems like a waste of a resource that could be better used by members of the community for affordable housing or revitalization to that north side. But it would just be a sad thing for that building to sit vacant for a really, really long time. And I hope that the board engages in further discussions surrounding that issue. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comment on any item that wasn't discussed on our agenda? Ms. Cole, if you want to put your hand up so we know you want to be called on for public comment? Pardon? Oh, okay. Any other hands raised or unmuting? Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and I don't know if the trustees want to take a short break for about a minute or so, or if we want to just keep going. Looks like people are ready to just keep going. So, okay. So we'll now go into a work session and I'll turn it over to Dr. Watson. I believe he has some additional partners, or at least a few folks who will be discussing it. So I'm going to go back to muting myself.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Holland. I wanted to make sure that we had enough time on the agenda to discuss this important topic. Seems like this is a topic we discuss at every meeting and that's probably likely going to continue for the foreseeable future. So I do appreciate the board's time and patience with this. I think it's an important topic, not only for the board, but for our community members. And so I think it's worthy of a, of a, of a few minutes this evening. I have, don't have a lot of slides tonight. I do have a few things I wanted to get in front of the board. And I've shared my screen on Zoom, so hopefully those that are on Zoom can see it as well. But I, I want to tell you what the purpose is, in, in my mind, what the purpose is for tonight, for this work session. Number one, I think it's important to get the board up to speed with what the committee's been discussing. So as you're well aware, we established a COVID task force that includes parents and teachers and administrators and board members, but not the entire board is on that task force. So I think it's important to make sure that the rest of the board is sort of up to speed with what the task force has been discussing. And, and the way I see this is the task force and the board are sort of working on parallel paths right now. And so it's important that we don't get one too far in front of the other, if you, if you will. So it's important for the board to, to kind of know what's being discussed. And then the second reason that I wanted to bring this here tonight for a work session is really to ask for, for your feedback. And I understand it will be feedback through discussion rather than a formal action. But I, I would seek board feedback and anything that you think the COVID task force should be considering when they're making their decisions. I asked the task force the same thing. I asked the task force what the board might consider when they're making your decisions. So it kind of goes both ways. And I'm hoping that we'll have an opportunity this evening to engage in a little bit of discussion and, and then also for the board to just provide some, some general comments or feedback that the task force can use going forward. So with that, let me just dive into this. Again, I don't have a whole lot, but I want to make sure I give you enough time at the end. And at the very end of the, of the slides here, I have a couple of thought questions that I will pose to the board that will hopefully generate a little bit of discussion. So I'm going to talk about a variety of things tonight. The first thing is sort of a COVID update. I, I asked Mr. Giamona, Mr. Giamona is our COVID response coordinator. I've asked him to talk briefly about our processes around contact tracing and quarantining and staffing. I want to give you an update and a path forward for the Missoula Online Academy. And then we'll talk about some of the decision-making models that we've been looking at. So I know it looks like a lot, but it's really not. Okay. So a brief update regarding our current status with COVID. We've had about a hundred, a little over a hundred cases so far this school year. That's, that's since we started the year. And when I say cases, those are confirmed positive cases between either students or staff. So it counts all, everybody. So if you just look at last week, the, the week that ended on eleven-six, we had twenty-one new cases over that seven-day period for that last week. But right, right now, at least as of Monday, we had sixteen active cases. So you understand that a new case, you know, eventually becomes a, a active case and then a non-active case once, once they, once they improve or get lifted off of isolation. So currently across the district, about sixteen active cases. Both of those numbers are really important for you to, to know and understand because there are some metrics related to those two numbers. And then the other thing we've been checking throughout the weeks is the transmission route. And what I mean by that is what percentage of the, of the positive cases were contracted outside of school? That's the transmission route. So it's been running between seventy and eighty percent of our positive cases are transmitted outside of school. And you might ask how we know that because through case investigation, we ask the confirmed positive, you know, where, where did you, where do you believe that this was contracted? And if they were able to identify, I was a close contact of a family member, I was a close contact of somebody outside of school, that's how we determine the, the transmission route. And, and like I said, between seventy and eighty percent, last week, we had about seventy percent outside of school, twenty-five percent unknown. And some of those are still under investigation. So some of those might turn into, into cases that were outside of school. We had about five percent of our cases last week that we believe were contracted in school or through a, through a connection at school. Let's see. New cases per day. Now, so everything below the line here is the county information. So everything above the line is district information, but below the line is everything we know that's going on in the county. So this is important because some of our metrics that we're going to be looking at rely heavily on what's going on in the county. So I want to make sure you have this. So new cases per day, per hundred thousand, this is a metric that the county is currently using. So if you take all the cases in the county, that, all the new cases per day in the county, you average it for seven days. And then you do a little bit of math to make it sure it's per one hundred thousand. We, it averages to about fifty-seven new cases per day, seven-day average in the county. Active cases in the county per ten thousand. So if you look right now on the county website, it's going to show you that it has between eight to nine hundred active cases. I did a little bit of math there to determine how many active cases per ten thousand. And the reason I did that is because we have about ten thousand people in the district. So I think it's a really good comparison of what's going on in the district. So if you look at the two numbers in yellow there, we had sixteen active cases in the district and you compare that to seventy-five active cases in the county. So it just gives you a little bit of comparison. I, I know it's not apples to apples, but it's, it's a good, it's a good way to look at active cases. And then the other thing that the county is calculating as well is the test positivity rate. And that's the number of tests that test, number of tests that test positive divided by the total number of tests that were given over a period of time. I do want to point out that this is always delayed by a week or so based on the county's metrics. So this number I'm reporting right here is from ten thirty-one. And if you look at that week before ten thirty-one, you'll see everything from seven percent all the way up to twelve percent. But if you kind of average it for the whole week, it comes out to about nine percent positivity rate. And then the county also does a transmission route. This one is really important for us to watch as well as a community. So what they suspect is that about sixty-two percent of their positive cases contracted through a confirmed close contact. So generally speaking, if I'm a close contact to a positive case and then I become a positive case, I would be counted in that sixty-two percent. So sixty-two percent confirmed to a, to a close contact. The thirty-one percent that's noted on there is the county suspects through community spread, which means the individual did not know where they caught it at. They, they weren't a close contact. They caught it somewhere in the community. Several board members and actually several members on our committee have asked this quite a few different times. How do we compare to other communities? This information is readily available on various websites for the school districts, but it did require a little bit of digging. So I apologize. It took a little while to get this to you. But I'm just going to compare four different school districts. And there's some interesting things when you look at these four districts. I just want to be clear before I do this, there is a lot of variables at play. So it's really unfair to try to, it's not an apples to apples comparison. There's the variable of the size of the district, the size of the schools, the amount, the amount of community spread in those communities varies from community to community. And then the actual school schedule varies from school to school. So I just, just want to be clear on that. But I have asked, several people asked, you know, how do we compare to other large school districts? So here's, the first line is the number of students in the district. So you can see we're about right in the middle. We're not as big as Great Falls. Kalispell's a little bit smaller than us. But those, those, that's basically the size of the district in terms of enrollment. The second line is, is the incident rate. So now I'm going back to the previous slide. Remember, we talked about the incident rate, which is actually the number of new cases averaged over seven days per hundred thousand. So this is an apples to apples comparison because it's per hundred thousand. So the incident rate in Missoula, I already reported that, this is fifty-seven. This is the county incident rate. In Helena, the current incident rate is sixty-five. Kalispell's eighty-six and Great Falls is one oh seven. So that's approximately a hundred and seven new cases per day, per hundred thousand averaged over seven days in Great Falls. The schedule, this is something that a lot of folks are comparing and contrasting. So this is what I know about these four districts. Ourselves and Helena are in a hybrid schedule, where Kalispell and Great Falls are in an every-day, every-kid schedule. There are some other variances, and I'm going to get to those in just a second. But one of the huge variances is just because we're in a hybrid schedule, it doesn't, it doesn't talk about the second piece. And the second piece that's important to our schedule is the block scheduling that we're doing at middle school and high school. I don't believe any of the other communities are using that same sort of block scheduling. And the block scheduling really does cut down on the number of close contacts. So there is some other variations to the schedule. But basically, in a nutshell, we're still in the hybrid model. So is Helena and Kalispell and Great Falls have been in every-day, every-kid since the start of the school year. These numbers are just from last week. So these are not total active cases for the whole school year. I just did a snapshot. And that's the other thing I want you to be aware of, this chart. It's just a snapshot in time. So for the case, the active cases this last week, you'll recall, I just reported to you, we had sixteen active cases in our district last week. Same timeframe, Helena had forty-six active cases in their district, Kalispell thirty, and Great Falls eighty-three active cases. And then I, I broke those down by elementary, middle school and high school. And I just want to be clear, too, here's another variance or a And I just want to be clear too, here's another variance or a variable. Great Falls actually goes K6 in their elementary rather than K5. And their middle schools only have 7, 8. So there is a little bit of variance there, but basically you can see the active cases broken down by grade level band. Now I, I do want to point something out here that I found kind of interesting. So take a look at Helena and Great Falls and focus on their middle school and their high school. And when you compare those to our middle school and high school active cases, you might assume that it has something to do with the hybrid model and it very well could. I mean, we obviously have fewer active cases in middle school and high school than these other communities. But I don't think it's completely the hybrid model because Helena also has the hybrid model. But what's interesting about our schedule is our intensive block schedule is radically different than any other community. Helena, Calispell and Great Falls, they, you know, some of these have every day, every student, but they also have six or seven periods in a school day. So to my knowledge, Calispell and Great Falls didn't change their block, their schedule. They still are going basically a seven period day. So that really increases the number of times that you're seeing other students, obviously increases the close contacts. And could have an impact on their active cases. I have no idea, but I did find that kind of interesting that you can look at, you know, kind of what's happening in middle school and high school. I do believe our intensive block schedule is, has been effective in terms of keeping our transmission low. But I just want to be clear, it's not easy and it's probably not an ideal schedule educationally. And I know that the, both the middle school and high schools have been talking about making some alterations to that going forward, perhaps in semester two. Because the block schedule is, while it might help with transmission rates, it's not an ideal educational model. All right. I can take a break from talking. So I think Vinnie is on the, on the Zoom and, and Vinnie, I just would like you to introduce yourself to the board. And what I've asked Vinnie to do is talk briefly about our processes around contact tracing. Because what we've noticed is this has a direct impact on, on our transmission rates. But also we're noticing some things about staffing. So, and then also I believe Brooke is on the phone too. Brooke is our health services supervisor. So she, she may or may not have anything to add to this, I don't know. But Vinnie, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, thanks, Rob. As Dr. Watson said, a big part of my position when I took over this temporary COVID coordinator position for the district was to help support Brooke in our response in our, in our buildings. And I know you've talked at great length at various board meetings together about just the impact and the intensity that the county is under with, with the tracing process in the community. And I think what, what Dr. Watson saw week after week as the cases increased was the challenges for the county to get to buildings and to staff and to students and conduct tracing. So after a conversation with Dr. Watson and when I moved over to this position on the 26th, our heavy focus was working, was for me to work side by side with Brooke and, and help our process and protocol for positive cases in buildings and then how we conduct our contact tracing once we are notified of a positive case. And so what we've worked on the past several weeks as a district with Brooke, with, with Hatton Lippman, our communication coordinator, and then with our building leadership team in our cabinet, is to make sure that we have systems in our buildings to respond to a positive case and that we respond to that positive case by providing appropriate contact tracing. And so we've worked really, really hard the last several weeks of identifying a positive case and then going through a lengthy process with contact tracing to make sure that we identify as best to our ability any possible close contacts in a classroom, in a building, and making sure that we help the process to quarantine those students and staff so that we can mitigate transmission within our schools. Now, as Dr. Watson said earlier, it's not an exact science. It's, it's complex and it's lengthy for sure, but it's been, I think, vital to our response in our buildings. And I think it, it reinforces some of the data that Dr. Watson just showed. With that, what we've seen the past week, and I don't think it's a shock to anybody on the call, as we've seen a spike in the, in the county with cases. We've also experienced a spike in, in our buildings. And, and that spike is not just from in our buildings, it's, it's the impact in our community. And so we've had an increase in contact, in close contacts, not only from in our buildings, but from when we step away and, and we do our, our normal day life. So that's what Dr. Watson just shared with you is the impact on staffing. And so what we've seen really the past five to seven days is an increase in staff that have been identified as close contacts and not necessarily close contacts because of positive cases in our buildings, but because of just our being connected to a larger community that's, that's experiencing a spike. So we've definitely seen a wear on our, on our staffing systems. And we always want to make sure that the safety of our students and staff are at the forefront. And so we've had some challenging conversations the past several days, talking and discussing about, you know, closing programs for an indefinite period of time, closing a building for an interim amount of time to make sure that we conduct a thorough tracing, cleaning and making sure that we have adequate staff in those buildings. So while I think that one of the things that we can all appreciate is our amazing teachers and staff and then our building leaders that have been really flexible and have thought outside the box and have supported one another when it comes to staffing, if we're short staff, moving some of our building subs in between and out of buildings to other buildings to help staff. And it really has been a collective effort, but I think we're continuing and we'll see over the next few weeks with, with the increase in cases in our community that, that will definitely test and stretch our systems.
All right, thanks, Vinnie. And I just to, just to hammer that point a little more home too as well, you know, we, we have, when you have increased positive cases in your community, you're going to see an increase of positive cases in your schools. And we, we are seeing that. It's not a huge increase, but there, there has been a definite increase this last week in terms of staff increases. And so if you have a staff member in the building, the close contacts to that staff member would also have to quarantine. So what we've seen is, you know, really through no fault of our own, just the fact that we've got more cases in the building. We've seen more staff that have had to quarantine. And that's what you see in some of these situations where we've had to shut down a program temporarily or shut down a school temporarily is because of a staffing issue. Now I know that across the state, you're likely to see some news as well about other communities where schools are closed or programs are closed. And, and generally what, what, what I've seen on that, on those media stories is it typically deals with a staffing issue and it typically deals with too many close contacts for a positive case. So it's just something to be aware of. Our teachers are stretched really thin specifically at K5. And there's, you know, there's definitely been some discussions about, you know, what's the tipping point? And we're working really closely with our building principals to determine when they've reached that tipping point. But I just want the board to be aware that some of those decisions have to be made fairly quickly. And unfortunately, we can't give a whole lot of heads up to our, to our community. Sometimes we have to make the decision fairly quickly based on the, the staffing situation. So let's see. The online academy, I'll be brief about this one as well. You probably remember that our enrollment is around 1,700 students, K12 in the online academy. I want to tell you kind of where we're headed with the online academy. I think that's a, a question our community's been asking and been very patient with us. Because as Pat mentioned earlier, we had no idea about the CARES Act money for, for second semester. We had some nervousness about committing for the whole year. But what Pat described earlier with the budget in terms of using the governor's CARES money first and then preserving some of the CARES Act money that we can for second semester, that we believe we can sustain the online academy for second semester. That's, you know, that's after January 22nd. So January 22nd is our semester break. And so after that time, we do believe we can sustain the online academy. But I want to be really clear that if we see a, a large increase in the students that want to go into the online academy, we don't have staffing for that. And so we may have to put some limits and what that could look like would be perhaps, you know, putting limits on certain grade level bands in the online academy and/or asking other staff from the buildings to go into the online academy so that we can staff it. We don't know, some students might want to go back into in-person instruction. So it might be kind of a wash in terms of kids, kids leaving and kids going in. But what we're going to do in the next few weeks is go through a, a pretty detailed enrollment process. So we know exactly who's going to stay and other students that might want to come in. And so we'll be able to start using that for planning purposes and that'll happen in the next few weeks. One thing I want the board to be aware of though, if we open an enrollment process, it's really important that our parents and our students have enough information to make that decision. And so one of the things that we're going to have to be clear about is what our in-person model might look like for second semester. But also on the MOA side, what we've found out is we can't offer everything that, that students might want, especially at the high school level. We just don't have enough staff in the MOA to offer the wide variety of electives that we offer at the high school. So we want to be clear to students too, that might want to go into the MOA, that their schedule may not look the same as it did in their high school. So those are a couple of things that I think are critically important as we move forward with the MOA. When, when I was working with our committee, one of the things that sort of we, we came to some agreements on or some, I guess some awareness, more, more than anything, just an awareness is how other districts are making these decisions. And it is really clear that districts are, are choosing one or the other of these models. You'll see some districts that select a date and they'll say, you know, on such and such a date, we're going to send all of our K5 kids back and then on the next date, we're going to send our 68 kids back. They basically have just chosen that date that made sense on the calendar and made sense for an educational reason. So, you know, maybe it's the end of the quarter and at the end of the quarter, we're going to send this group of kids back to, you know, five days a week. Those are some of the decisions you're seeing across the state. So that's, that's what I would kind of classify as sort of that Model B where a specific date is identified to make a shift and it really has nothing to do with COVID numbers in the county. And then the other model, and I'm not promoting one of these over the other. I just want to be clear with the board that there's really a, a clear division here that we're going to have to wrestle with. So the other model specifically looks at COVID data in the community and uses that COVID data to make the decision. So it's, it's, it's a little different model and it's not something that most districts are doing. Currently the, there are a few districts in the state that are, that are looking strictly at COVID data, community data. Helena is one of the school districts I know for sure that's focusing a lot of their decisions based on what's happening in the community. So I just want it to be the board, the board to be aware of that. I think what would be great if we could do a little bit of both of these models. But again, you know, if you're going to make a decision based on a specific date, you're really probably not going to look strictly at the COVID data because if you choose a date, you don't really know what the COVID data is going to look like. All right, so I asked the task force this week, we've had several meetings with the task force. And I asked them this week, I said, we're going to have a, a meeting with the board of trustees, a work session. And, and can you give the board of trustees some guidance? And these are the three bullet points that they wanted me to share. Number one, that, that the members of the task force reached some agreement around the fact that we should develop a framework, a decision-making framework, specific as possible with, with some data to direct and define the learning program. The other thing is they said, as we, as you consider decisions, as we consider decisions, we should differentiate between K5, 68 and 912. So maybe no longer a one size fits all, but we really should differentiate between those grade levels. And then the final thing is they said, they would like us to stick with the current model until this framework is developed. And hopefully we can do that, you know, in the next few weeks. But they would like us to stick with the model until that framework is developed. And then unless the COVID spike becomes completely unmanageable in our community, in that case, we'd probably be seeking guidance from the health department if we're talking about going to a more restrictive model. I, I want to be clear, I don't think there's anyone on the committee that would like us to see, to go to completely remote learning. That's, that, they know that that's a difficult thing to ask of parents and teachers. So that's not what they're suggesting. They're just saying, saying that if things become a lot worse in the next few weeks or months, that we may have to look at a more restrictive approach. But of course, we would never make that decision without board discussion and guidance from the health department. Okay, I want to really make sure you understand the decision-making models that we're looking at because they're pretty intensive in terms of data. And I want to have you all to have a chance to make sure you understand what, what we're looking at to make these decisions. So all of the decision-making models, and I'll show you all of them here in a second, it'll help explain this. But all of them have primary indicators and secondary indicators. The primary indicators look at that incident rate, which remember is the number of new cases per 100,000 residents and the test positivity rate. Those are the two metrics that most of the models use. And then they also have secondary indicators that they consider like hospital capacity, school metrics, school numbers, active case counts. So it's important that when we build this model, that we have your feedback on, on these metrics. So this is a very busy chart that I will break down fairly quickly here. It's, it looks at several different models and just compares them. So CDC, the Harvard model, Billings and Helena both developed decision-making models. And then there were three states that we compared them to, Oregon, Washington and North Dakota. They also had some decision-making models. The state of Montana has not developed a decision-making model and they've left it up to the local districts. But I want to focus in on the Harvard model, that's this column right here, HGHI. And I'll just explain what you're looking at here. So you can see that there's four phases. We're currently in the hybrid schedule, so you could argue that we're in phase one. Some of the other models we've talked about is hybrid plus. I, I considered that sort of a phase two. Phase three would definitely be traditional, like every day, every kid. You know, we're probably pretty far away from that. But that's like a traditional schedule like we had last year, not a block schedule, but more of just a traditional seven period day or, or whatever it is. So that, that would be phase three. But I want to tell you what the metrics Harvard would recommend. They're saying that, and we'll just use the, the, the phase zero. Harvard would say that we would need to be less than 25 new cases per day, per 100,000. So remember, Missoula is sitting at about, about 57 right now in our community. So we're, we're near, nearly double that, over double that of new cases per day, per 100,000. The other thing that they would recommend is you have less than a 10% positivity rate. If you, if you reach both of those metrics or if you're below those metrics, then you could start considering moving to other phases. But right now, we're, you know, we're, we're pretty, we're, we're over in the daily new cases. And we're, on some days, we're over in the test positivity rate as well. So we're really, as a community in Missoula, we're really in the pink zone here, the phase zero. Obviously, we're not operating that way as a district. We're still in phase one in the hybrid schedule. But you may remember that the county announced some new restrictions a few weeks ago and they were basing those new restrictions on this, on this 25 number. So the county health officer said she wanted to see that number below 25 and, and before she would lift those restrictions. And, and so she's hoping that we'll get there, but right now we're at about 57 new cases per day, per 100,000. All right, so this is, this is really the, the point of discussion for the board. And, and I'll leave these up here, but we can also go back to any slides if you have any questions. But really, as you start thinking about what sort of guidance you could give the task force that will help them in their work, I'd really like to, to hear a little bit of discussion about what you'd like to see in terms of the recommendation. You know, what sort of data you want us to consider? Do you want the recommendation to have a timeline or any predictability, those sorts of things? What factors or indicators should we consider in making our, our decisions? Should we consider COVID-related factors or are there other factors that are important to you as a board for us to consider? And then the final thing is what further information would you like to have to help make this decision? So I'm going to stop there, Chair Holland, and sorry I took longer than I thought I would. But if there's any questions on any of the previous slides, I can go back or we can focus on some discussion around these questions. I'm going to take notes because we're going to have another committee meeting in the next few days. And I want And I want to be able to share with the committee what was, what was talked about here tonight. The other thing I would say is this presentation will be up on our website, uh, probably tomorrow in case folks are looking for it.
And so I don't know if this seems like an appropriate order to the discussion. But first we do questions and then more general comments about what additional information we'd like to see and recommendations about which model or models or factors, um, we would like the task force to consider. So first, maybe just starting with any questions about the material that's been presented so far? I, I can't because, because there's a screen sharing thing going on. Okay. And, oh, Trustee Mercer, have a question? Wait, sorry.
I always got questions. Um, I'll do three. If a kid is positive in a normal classroom, and we know they've been in the classroom, is the teacher a close contact that gets quarantined? Are the kids close contact to quarantine? What's the effect of a positive kid? And a lit, in actual data, do we have kid to staff transfers that have been happening? And in those other schools with those numbers, we know our transfer rate is being driven by outside, that seventy percent number. Do we know that number for other districts?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start with the last one. I don't know that percentage, um, for other districts. So, but I can, I can check with those superintendents and see if they can give me an understanding of that. Your first questions are really important and I want Vinnie to answer that a little bit. Vinnie or Brooke, both of them have been doing contact tracing. So I think it's really important that we clarify what, what, what it, what a close contact is.
Yeah, uh, happy to, Rob. And like you said, that's a, that's a really good question. And hopefully I can help with some clarity there. So, um, I believe your, your question was if a student in a room was a positive, what that process would look like for us would be, once, once we're given that information, we want to make sure, um, to begin the tracing process with identifying that positive, uh, case initially and making sure that we connect with that school, um, and making sure that we understand, uh, what the dynamic in that room looked like. So when we conduct contact tracing, uh, our first response is always going to be, uh, who, going right to the source. And that's the same process that the county would do as well. So we want to look, uh, and have a conversation with that positive case and get their perspective of what did the, what did the dynamic in that room look like? What did their day look like? What did their schedule look like? Some key points and triggers that we're gonna, that we're always gonna look for is what was the interaction that that positive case had with anybody in their class? In the hallways, in the bathroom, um, after school and in activity, uh, if they were, um, at lunch? Whatever the dynamic would be at any, at any level. And so what we're looking for is when they had an interaction with another person, uh, in our buildings, was it longer than fifteen minutes of cumulative time? And were they within six feet of that person, um, with mask on or mask off? So, um, those are gonna be a couple of key triggers that we're gonna talk about right away with that positive case. And so, um, once we get a, a, a pers, our perspective from that positive case, uh, we may bring in some other, um, uh, people to help us with that process. So, uh, we'll have a conversation with the leadership team from that school, uh, that principal, maybe an assistant principal, and, and figure out what did the seating chart look like, what did the schedule look like? Uh, what did their trans, their transition between classrooms look like? And once we gather that information, uh, we'll work hand in hand with our building nurses and we'll start identifying who all was a close contact. So I know I'm a little long-winded there, but to your question, it all is gonna come down to circumstances and that relationship that that positive had with any people in their room. So in theory, if you've got a small classroom, um, with, with a smaller size and that student didn't spend a lot of time within six feet of other classmates with their teacher, you may not have, um, a large amount of close contacts in that room. But again, it all comes down to what are the dynamics of that room? And what we've seen is that in some of our instances and some of our classrooms, we've had no close contacts, we've had one, maybe two. But then in other circumstances and other programs where it's hard to social distance, um, the intensity of, of that relationship and support that that student may need, we could see a lot more close contacts with students and staff. So it's really, it's really relative to the, to the, the dynamic of the classroom. But again, it all goes back to right now, I think the hybrid schedule we're in, as Rob alluded to, um, the, the fewer students, the hybrid schedule, the block schedule with our six, twelve classrooms that we've really been able to mitigate in a lot of circumstances, the amount of close contacts, which has helped us keep our building staff, uh, which has helped us minimize, uh, transmission within our, within, within our building. Now, we've had some small clusters, um, and that's to be expected, I think, when you look at this virus and the complexity of it. But we've really been able to minimize transmission because of the immediate, um, close, close, uh, contact tracing by nurses, Brooke and myself.
Any other questions? I, I guess I have one, it's just, if someone, you know, is tested positive outside of the school setting, and so their close contacts are determined probably by the city county health department, but we get notified that they were one of our staff or students. Do we do parallel close contacts because we've got better information about, for example, seating charts? You know, lunch breaks, who sat at what table? Or who, who kind of controls the conversation about what constitutes a close contact?
So great question. So when, um, we have a staff member or a student that contracts from outside the school, there, there's still, there's still things that we need to do as a school. So even though they may have contracted the virus from outside, if they were in school during an infectious period, uh, which is also clearly defined, um, by our, by the Health Department and the nurses. But if they were in school during an infectious period, then we will have to do contact tracing in that school. And if it's a student, we obviously would involve their parents, um, and probably their teacher or teachers to figure out what the dynamics of the classroom looked like. But to short answer to your question, yes, we would, we would do the contact tracing for anything that may have happened in school. They may also have close contacts outside of school, which would be identified by the Health Department.
So in other words, kind of a parallel, um, investigation as to close contacts? Any other questions from trustees? Trustee Mercer and then Trustee Havens? Or how about Trustee Havens first and then Trustee Mercer?
Rob, could you, or Dr. Watson, could you go back to that slide of the, the three points the task force wanted to address? Cause one of them was the difference between the different grade levels and how there might be a different answer. And that's not really in the solutions that the different models suggest. But I do see in terms of our, you know, our public comment and everybody that's talked to me that we do have different, really different needs in terms of age level, grade levels. So is there, has there been any kind of different consideration for what, what we could do for special cases or for different grade levels?
Yes. So, um, two things, uh, the Harvard model and the links are provided in the, in the board packet. And they're also provided on our website. But the Harvard model actually does differentiate by grade level. What the Harvard model would suggest is that once you get into the, um, the orange zone, that you should prioritize K five or K one-two actually is what they say. So th- there is some differentiation in the Harvard model. They don't necessarily tell you what to do, but they do say, if you're gonna, if you're gonna bring kids back, prioritize younger grade levels. So they, they do suggest that in there. And then the other thing I just to, to point out, and I, I'm sorry I didn't say this earlier, but we, we already differentiate quite a bit for, for special needs programs in our, in our schools. We've got some special needs programs that are going four days a week. Our preschool, which, um, is, has quite a few special needs, um, students there is also going multiple days during the week. We've made a lot of, um, accommodations for various students across the board. It just hasn't been universal. We haven't said like all of first grade can come back to school. It's been, it's been sort of, um, as needed by, by kid.
Mine's sort of related to that in that is the Harvard model epidemiological purely? Or does it have an educational weighing built into that? Or is it looking at it purely from a disease standpoint?
Yeah. So the original Harvard model was built on a community, uh, community decision-making process. So those metrics are really community-based and it's why our health officer is using that to, to address restrictions in the community. However, um, later on, as time went along, Harvard model started to address some school issues as well. They're still using those metrics, but that, what they're saying is you can have some variance on what you do during those phases based on the school, school needs. But they, they are still using those metrics. I, I'd have to look at it specifically to see if they have other secondary indicators to consider. I know a lot of the, uh, I know the CDC model has secondary indicators. One of the secondary indicators in the CDC model is how, how well you're doing at the mitigation strategies. Like are your students wearing masks? Are you social distancing? Do you have, uh, routines for, for cleaning and hand washing? So the CDC actually breaks out some of those secondary indicators as, um, things you should consider when, when you're making those, those decisions.
Sorry, Trustee Old Person?
On, on the task force, um, I noticed you, there were no children or no students on the task force. How are you incorporating what they want? Cause as a mother, I speak to my sons all the time about what's going on, um, in the world at school. And it makes me really nervous with this spike of cases in our county. And I wanted, I'm, I'm trying to think. If we do move forward in any direction, one, you showed that the other schools are going full-time, every student, every day. Do you know how many of those have turned into any hospitalizations or anything, any severe cases like that? Because that's really a big concern of mine. I don't want any of our students, our staff to go to that level of anything with this virus. That's not something I want to be overseeing, anything like that?
Yeah, those are some great questions. I, I'm sorry, I don't know about hospitalizations in those other communities. And I think specifically what you're asking is, has, have there been any students or staff members that ended up in the hospital? Or possibly even extended family members, but I just don't know that. But I, I can find out, I can ask those questions. The, the student voice is really important. I think it is really important to our process. We don't have any students on the committee. I, I would say that, um, you know, many times during the process, we hear teachers and/or parents say, you know, I've, I've talked to my students or I've talked to my kids. So I, I do believe that they're carrying some of those voices from their kids and from their students into the committee. But we don't have student voice on that and it's something we should consider going forward.
Any other questions? I, I do have one more question. So in this, in the various groups that we've looked at, CDC, Harvard, Billings, North Dakota, Oregon, is the leadership different? I mean, you mentioned that in Montana, it's local control that's making the decisions either at the county level or in the district level. And it might be in a different state is being made at the state level? Did I understand that right?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. So if you look at the Oregon model, the Washington model, the North Dakota model, those were co, uh, developed collaboratively between the, that basically their Office of Public Instruction and their Department of Public Health at the state level got together and developed the models. Washington is really unique because Washington, like, like Montana, has a lot of, well, not a lot. They have some rural schools, just like we do. So Washington actually breaks theirs down based on school size. They would give different recommendations to different school districts. So I thought that was pretty creative, but nothing in Montana like that has been developed.
Any other questions? Trustee Old Person?
As a, um, football mom, I, how are we looking at extracurriculars? Cause I know I spoke to you, um, on our two-on-one, three-on-ones, the importance of the extracurricular for my child and how it helped his mental health. And I know that's across the board for any extracurricular, not just athletics. So is that, how is that being put into the decision-making as well?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll give you the current status. So, um, at, uh, K five and middle school, we have put a, we put a hold on all of the extracurricular activities. So we're not doing any intramural activities or inner-school activities at middle school like we would have done in a normal year. Quite frankly, I was waiting until we moved to a different phase before we would start allowing some of that at middle school. So I, I do, um, I do worry about that because some of those activities are really important, important to our students and families. But we're not doing any of those at, at middle school. At high school, where Vinnie had talked about clusters, at high school where we have seen some clusters has been in our extracurricular activities. And what's difficult with that, especially in those activities where you cannot socially distance, it's just not possible. Volleyball is a good example. It's impossible to socially distance in volleyball. So if you have one positive case on a team, the entire team pretty much has to quarantine. And that's taken kids out of school for an extended period of time. So there are pluses and minuses, benefits and challenges to having those activities. I know they're important to students, but we've also seen a lot of students miss a lot of school because of positive cases on a team. One good thing that our schools are doing, and I think one of our student trustees actually mentioned this, is they're practicing protocols on those teams. So at a school, like a, whatever high school, if you had four volleyball teams, maybe a freshman team or two freshman team and a sophomore JV and a varsity team, those teams are trying to practice separately so that you're not taking out multiple levels at the same time. But, um, a freshman volleyball team might have nine to eleven players. And so one positive in that entire freshman team would have to quarantine for fourteen days. And that's what we have seen this fall. I worry about this, uh, winter activities, uh, specifically basketball and wrestling, uh, because it's impossible to socially distance in those activities. So just the nature of the activity, Vinnie described what a close contact is. Fifteen minutes cumulative, um, six feet or less. Doesn't matter if you're wearing a mask or not, uh, you're gonna be considered a close contact. So if we restart basketball in a few weeks and we've got multiple teams playing, we're likely to have more clusters and close contacts.
Any other questions? I, I don't know if any of the trustees on Zoom have questions. Oh, Trustee Decker?
It looks like it. Thanks. Um, I was wondering if, um, uh, Dr. Watson, if you or, uh, uh, Mr. Jamona could share any of the academic or other kinds of data that you might have to add to the conversation? I know we heard a little bit about that with the STAR three sixty testing report that Amy Shattuck shared, which I think we did at the board meeting as well as at the committee meeting. And so I just wanted to ask if there's any other kind of updated information now that we're coming to the end of the, we're at the end of the quarter about, um, sort of what is going on for kids academically? Are, um, I know there's a lot of concern about kids being quote behind. Um, and is that in fact, you know, uh, where, where does that land? And also any other data, um, that you have about, you know, utilization of services or, um, that kind of stuff? Also about behavior, um, you know, any of, any of those kinds of indicators that we might have? I don't know if we've done a My Voice survey, but finding out from kids, kind of where they are. Just any of that other data about the experience that could add to that?
Yeah. So, uh, the, uh, several of those things you've talked about, Trustee Decker, we are, we are in the middle of, of trying to track some of that down. So, um, Amy Shattuck and I, I think Amy's on the phone as well. Amy is our federal programs director and, um, keyed into our assessment data. We were just chatting about this today about comparing cohorts from last fall to cohorts from this spring or this fall. So for example, if you had a group of kindergartners that took the STAR three sixty assessment last fall, you could, and if you could assume that most of them are in the same school or a large percentage of them are in the same school, you could compare their kindergarten STAR assessment to their first grade fall assessment. So we're just in the process of doing that. We're seeing some, um, concerns with that. There's some students that do just fine or did just fine during the shutdown, while there's other large groups of students that haven't. And we've, we've seen sort of a dip from last fall to this fall. So, uh, we'll be sharing that with the committee here, um, in the next few days if we can pull some of that together. But that's, that's one area that we're considering or we're looking at. The My Voice survey, I think, um, Vinnie, I know we chatted about doing that. Do you have any feedback on that? Do you have any feedback on that?
Yeah, uh, Grace, that'll be a focus, um, uh, in the up, in the upcoming week is, is just like you said, is trying to get some input from our students, I think. Um, on, on both sides of that, I know I've had the privilege of being with you on the task force and looking at some various research on both sides, um, and trying to get some input from them. I know we want to be mindful of, uh, you know, their, their feeling of school and, um, wanting to be in school, being away, the fears, all those, you know, all those various emotions that come with that. So we're going to work on that in the, in the next week. And my hope is to get an update to Rob, um, by, by hopefully next week.
Any other questions? Trustee Service?
Yeah, I was wondering, um, what's happening with the kids that are in quarantine? Are they, uh, able to keep up? Because if we do have kids going more in person at some point, uh, we gotta just make sure that we're taking care of anybody that has to be quarantined.
Yeah, so, um, it, it, it is dependent on the grade level and the age of the students. Um, I was, uh, with a group of high school teachers on Monday and they talked about their level of, um, their level of commitment and also their, their level of comfort around producing more and more of their, um, activities and lessons online specifically for those kids that have to quarantine. And it's a very difficult task for a lot of, um, a lot of our curricular areas. If you can imagine trying to take a science lesson or a science lab and, and reproducing that online. But we have teachers that are working very hard at that. So what I would say is that all of our teachers are trying to figure out ways to keep those kids engaged and keep them moving forward if they're on quarantine. But it really depends on the age and, and ability of the student as well. Um, for some of our younger grades, it's likely to be packets of material rather than, um, you know, rather than anything synchronous just because of the nature of, of the ability of those students. So, but we're trying lots of different things. I, I don't think we perfected it at all, but I was encouraged by my short discussion with a group of high school teachers that are really trying to think outside the box to keep those kids engaged. I know it's a concern, uh, because of our block schedule. As I said earlier, there's pluses and minuses to our block schedule. And because they're in the, in that particular class for such a short period of time, a short number of weeks, that if they get quarantined for two weeks, they can miss quite a bit of material. So there, there are definite benefits and challenges of our block schedule.
So who would a, a parent contact if their kid goes into quarantine? Is there like a point person or do they have to contact each teacher?
Uh, they would contact the teacher, um, and, and also they could work with the school counselor or the school administrator, but we would encourage them to start with a teacher first.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Trustee Agaros?
Thank you. Um, so I think the goal of everyone is, is to get our kids back in school, right? I, I don't think that's a debate amongst anybody. What if we, but the, the issue is how safe can we get them back, right? And we have these indicators or these, these different mitigation strategies that are, I forgot the exact five, but face masks, social distancing, six foot, six feet, washing hands, there's, there's five of them, right? What is the discussions around? I think our parents would like to hear some outside the box thinking in this of instead of waiting for the community and the COVID cases to come back to us to a level that we're comfortable sending our kids back to school, at least at the K through five level, what discussions are going on and how we could do that? Cover all of that social distancing and, uh, and I know there's conversations going on and, and maybe you're not comfortable talking about all of them yet. But what are we in discussions of, of solving both of these problems? Both data and education to where we can get our kids back in school, but we can keep all those mitigation strategies?
Yes, I think, I think probably the, um, and this is really where I, I wanted to highlight this chart again. This is where the rubber hits the road. Really, if we're talking about, um, educational decisions, we know that educationally for some of our students, especially at the younger grade levels, it's very difficult to do the remote learning. On that same note, there is significant safety concerns as well. And so we do have to balance that. And the, the left side of this chart really does focus on, you know, less, less risk concerning safety. Um, so there's a little bit more risk under model B, but, um, but you, you have to understand that going down this road. And I think that's what trustee Agaros is asking is where is our risk benefit? I guess if you want to call it, um, line there and, and, and what sort of discussions have we been having about, you know, both sides of this model? I, I would tell you that, that committee is doing a great job exploring all the issues. We spent a long time looking at various research sources about transmission rates, effects on kids, um, both social, emotional effects, those sorts of things. So I think the committee is, is having those discussions. I do think if you take a look at the committee recommendations, they, they specifically said, as we consider decisions, we should differentiate between various grade level bands. However, um, I do also believe that the committee is very concerned about safety. If we were to bring K-five kids back for more days during the week, we'd, we'd wanna, I, I know for sure the committee would want to make sure it's done in a safe manner. And so then you're going back to sort of the left-hand side of this chart, which, which really does, um, look at community safety with regards to COVID data. So I am encouraged by the fact that I think those discussions are happening. I think we will start to differentiate, um, these decisions based on the grade level band. Perhaps we will find a way to safely bring kids back where we can still physically distance. We can still keep classes small. I have no idea, um, but those are some of the discussions I'm hearing now is how do we sort of have the best of both worlds? How can we, how can we have a safe environment, but still get kids in the building more often, especially at that K-five level?
Trustee old person?
Um, what is the financial impact for a lot of the decision-making as well? Cause, um, when we're going through the budget with Pat, uh, we talked about overtime of the custodians because of the extra cleaning that they have to do. And then second question is what is, what are the teachers saying that are on the committee?
Yeah, so, um, I try not to speak for the teachers if I, if I don't have to. There's, there's actually some on the call tonight and maybe, um, well, I, 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 let me, let me, let me do it this way. This is, the committee process, just so you understand, is a facilit, uh, facilitated consensus process, which means we really don't make any decisions or make any statements unless the entire committee has time to discuss it and voice their concerns. We do a vote, a thumb vote on, on whatever things we push forward. So those three statements came out of the committee. That, those statements carry both, um, you know, teacher voice and, and board member voice and administrator voice and parent voice. Remember there's, there's three parents on the committee as well. So those statements really came from the committee. We'll continue to do that. We'll provide statements from the committee as a whole. So that's probably a better way to look at what the, you know, what the teachers are saying. I think they, the teachers on the committee agreed with those statements. Um, the, the financial impact is, is significant. Pat talked about the, the expenditure of the governor's money. So nearly $4 million, um, in the governor's money. And we've expended quite a bit of it, a lot of it on staff, a lot of it to get the MOA up and running, but also to backfill other staff, to provide overtime, to hire, uh, to, to increase the hours for our nurses. Um, I, it's the, it's a laundry list of things we've put in place to really support what, what we have going forward. My nervousness about staffing is we're at the limit in terms of the number of people that could be hired in our community. So it's not a, it's not a simple issue. It's just saying if we had more money, we could do X because really in order to do X, you've got to find more teachers. Um, for example, let's just say that we wanted to reduce the class size in all of our buildings to keep it under that, you know, that magic number of 15 or 18 kids so that we could bring kids back more often. We don't, we don't have enough teachers to hire to do that. There's just not a, that, not many, that many teachers in our community. Beyond that, we don't have the space in a lot of, in some of our buildings, not all of our buildings. So it's not insurmountable, but those are some of the things we have to consider regarding the financial implication. We have money, um, in CARES Act to sustain, like I said earlier, to sustain the MOA. But unfortunately, we can't necessarily grow it because we don't have money to do that. Plus there's not teachers out there to actually hire in the MOA. We, we really sort of searched long and hard to get our teachers that we have in the MOA right now. And, uh, superintendent, our assistant superintendent Lodge spent several weeks, you know, really tracking down those teachers from across the region. Um, but if, if, if we had a 10% increase in the MOA, not only do we not have the res, the financial resources, we may not have the staffing out there that could really do it. So then we're looking at, you know, probably going back to our classroom teachers and encouraging a few more of them to go into the MOA. But we won't know that until we open the enrollment. But the financial implications are there, but it's also dependent on how many staff we can find.
Thanks. Um, any other questions? I have one more, but I don't want to ask mine unless anyone, or until everyone else has had some questions asked too. So I'm looking at the guidance for the task force. And so this question might actually be moving toward asking the task force for information. But at, at least I'm trying to wrap my brain around the fact that the, the science side of things, there's pretty good data. I mean, we know what the counties, we know what the nationals, we know what the state's doing. We know incident rates, we know rates of transmission. On the educational side, it looks like we've had one STAR test. And typically in education, it's, you know, that kind of testing only happens maybe three times a year. So are, are any other states or any other places in Montana developing some metric to measure educational, um, progress or deficiencies? Cause I, I've done a lot of reading, both nationally and at the state level, and I haven't seen any yet.
Yeah, I haven't seen any metrics regarding the educational side. I, I have seen quite a few predictive studies of what they expect students will, you know, what the, what the impacts will be. I've also seen, um, quite a, quite a lot of research on social, emotional, mental health type of stuff. Um, and so there are some, there's some good studies out there. I haven't seen anything at the state level with regards to other, what other districts have investigated with that. And I definitely haven't seen any of these models that use those sorts of metrics as decision-making models. I do think in the secondary indicators, so if you, if you look at the, those models, they all have the two primary indicators and then they have some secondary indicators. I think you'll start to see some of that there, like have you considered, you know, food insecurity or have you considered academic data? I think those things could be, could be brought in, but, um, I haven't seen any metrics around those.
Any other, trustee Agaros?
So why aren't we having a discussion about athletics? Um, I, and trustee old person, I, I totally sympathize and I understand. I played football and basketball in high school and it was, is why I went to school. It was, it was a mental health thing for me as well. Um, but we have anecdotal and it's, it's not just one or two cases. Uh, I had a case yesterday, a, a second grade kid that I taught in Cub Scouts, that, uh, he's a great student, excels, and he's in tears at the end of the week because he only goes to school two days a week and his mom's having a tough time teaching him. And this isn't just one case. This is, this is happening out there. And so the mental health of these kids, uh, for us not to be able to get them back into school four or five days a week, um, I don't know if it's being sacrificed because, you know, athletics is having a few outbreaks. I don't think that's the case. I, I think we manage those pretty well and we move forward. I think, don't think it has to be one or the other. But if we, how do we go to our parents and say, we can't get our kids back in school because the threat of this disease is too much, but it's okay to send the basketball team out on the basketball floor and bounce around with each other? I don't think that that's a fair argument. I, I think that that's a, a question that if you had to look in a parent's eyes, that's a tough one to answer. And maybe we can have both, maybe we can't. Maybe there's an answer to this, but, but why aren't we having that discussion?
Any other questions? I just have one observation related to that. I know that there's a lot of middle, middle school, well, there's, um, school basket, or non-school basketball programs. Most of them aren't going to be running this year. It's just decisions-making. I know that hockey rink is making decisions about less physical activity. It's all, you know, it's just so, there's no other, uh, uh, we're losing outlets also just for kids to exercise because of middle of a pandemic kind of thing, so. Pardon? Oh, great, go ahead trustee Decker. Sorry, I'm trying to keep an eye on everybody.
That's okay, thanks. Um, I, we're, I'm not sure if we're still exclusively doing questions cause I think sort of questions and commentary sort of mush. But I, I continue to wonder about trying to find ways to serve. When, when we talk about, um, differentiating between age groups, I really keep wondering about differentiating between need in some ways also. Um, and how we can get individualized support to kids who might not normally get that kind of individualized support under like more normal circumstances. I know it's not the way we normally do things. And I understand there's a lot of complexity to trying to get supports to kids on the days when they're not in the school building. But it seems to me that a lot of what we are up against is exactly that challenge, which is how do we get supports to kids on the days when they're not in the school building? Because it seems accurate to say that what we're doing is doing good things in terms of health. Like I think the, what we're doing and the reason that our numbers, you know, such as they are, um, six months ago, we would have been shocked. But now it seems like we are actually really, we are not contributing in a significant way to the community spread i- in ways that we, that we might if we weren't being so careful. So that's a good thing. Um, but the problem is that kids are not necessarily getting on their remote days what, what they need. And, and so I continue to wonder whether we can think about the services that are provided and how we can be creative about that. Um, and identify kids individually in some ways and also deploy services that would normally happen in the school a little bit differently. Um, I just, that, that's just a, a piece of this conversation that I continue to try to like massage around the edges and see where that comes from.
And I think that's a good segue, trustee Decker, to either kind of mushing together either feedback or guidance to give to the task force or information we'd like to get more from the task force, such as the information that trustee Decker just asked. And so I think, um, Dr. Watson brought up the guidance for the task force. So it's, it's open to any trustees either to provide some guidance, what, what kind of information you'd like to get more. Um, where, you know, where you'd like us to see, you know, in terms of what are we going to measure against kind of stuff? So we'll start with trustee Agaros.
Thanks. Uh, you know, piggybacking what trustee Decker said, I, I think the support a lot of these kids needs is more interaction with other kids. That's, that would solve a lot of the problems. Um, I have in front of me here, uh, the numbers from Hellgate Elementary. I don't think there's anybody that we can compare to that's better than Hellgate. Uh, they're going every day, five days a week. Um, they've had 11 kids and five staff have it, um, it's since the start of school, which I did a little bit of my, uh, Oregon math here. And that is about 1.1% of, um, their school that has had it. I, and they're K through eight. So I did the same math for our K through eight at MCPS and we've been just a little bit under 1%. So our community partner, folks that, um, uh, work in our community, they're our neighbors, uh, they're the people we converse with, their kids are doing the same stuff ours is. Uh, they're statistically insignificant, the difference between the number of cases in K through eight as we've had. I don't know if that tells a story, but it, it screams to me, um, the, the slide we put up that we compared us with other markets up there, those markets are, are driven, if, if they're like us, are driven by external sources coming into our school. So how is their community wearing masks? I've been to three of those communities in the last two weeks and I can tell you that their mitigation strategies are a lot different than Missoula County. They're not wearing masks like we are. Uh, they're not, don't have enforcement like we do. Their reduced sizes in restaurants are not like ours are. So comparing us to those is a tough thing to do because this is coming into our schools. But by comparing us to Hellgate Elementary who's doing this, we are statistically no different than them right now. So this can be solved in a lot of ways by using our exceptional mitigation strategies, tackling the younger students and getting the younger students back in in some way, back into school more, even with our heightened number. in some way, back into school more, even with our heightened numbers in the district. We have external sources that these kids are going places. These kids are going to daycares. And those daycares, I know two of, I won't mention in this public platform, that have had to shut down for two weeks to quarantine. This is happening everywhere. Our kids are somewhere those other three days. These statistics show, again, two and a half months worth of statistics, show that Hellgated every day, every student has been statistically no different than us under the age of under eighth grade. So those are the kind of things I think we need to have frank conversations that our own perception, marrying up to what the data is, I mean, I'd have not made a, I haven't been shy about saying that I don't like the hybrid model. I think the hybrid model is the worst model. I think that the kids are having a tough time with it. I think that the new hybrid model needs to be our hybrid plus model. And if that is not working, we need to go back to full remote. Because this hybrid model, I don't think we can put it on our teachers to teach those kids the other three days effectively. It's really impossible to teach in two places at one time. We need to get to a place where we can get our kids in school, or we need to get full remote, which nobody wants, and at least at the K through five level. It's critically important. And I think we're at a point that we need to make some hard decisions about that.
Trustee Mercer?
So echoing that, and then also, I want to follow up on something Grace said. I mean, my thought of my thought experiment is, if we had gone four days a week to start with, would we right now be voting to go back to go to two? And I don't think we, I think we would be in whatever status quo we're in, and we just kind of hunkered. We're having a hunker thing. And it happens to be we're in two days a week, which I agree is perhaps the worst. I go back and forth where it's worse than full remote. But I would like to see for data, I don't think we're driving it. I just don't think we're driving community spread from the data there. So the numbers to me are what are our internal numbers. If our internal numbers are low, then maybe in my mind, that's the metric we should use. I would note on the 25 thing, I mean, Billings is saying that they're 25? Billings is at 100 or something, right? Like, no one's using that. So, I mean, maybe that, maybe we all should, maybe that's not a good, what everybody else is doing. I, big picture timeline, I think we're in COVID for at least the end of the school year, and we should realize that and make a plan that encompasses the whole school year, rather than kicking this along. One thing that, so if MyView loses out, and we remain in two days a week, then following up a little bit on what Grace said, if we can safely have 16 kids or whatever that number is in a given classroom, and we currently only have 12, why are we wasting those four seats? We should find the people that would most benefit from them and get them in those, right? I mean, why, why wouldn't we? And I know we are a little with IEP kids some degree, but like, and how do you choose? I don't know how you choose. Maybe at the end, you just do a lottery. But like, if people want to be there, and we have space that we can safely fill, why wouldn't we fill it just because we split in half? And and so, so I do, I want my kid to go back to school, too. But yes, if there's someone that needs to slot more, someone should take the slot, if there's a slot.
Any other either feedback or direction to give to Dr. Watson or general comments? From anybody else? Trustee Service?
I just want to comment, I really appreciate the Hellgate Elementary information, because I've always, I really wondered about that, because they seem to be the who to compare to, since they've been all every day since the beginning, and they're a large district, K eight. So if that's information is true, it seems to seem that we could go every day. So I would like to, you know, that's the kind of information we should use to figure out whether we go instead of comparing it to these other districts. I think that one's more relevant, because it's actually in our county with the same community spread that we would see. So that's my comment.
Anybody else? Trustee Decker?
Thanks. When we talk about Hellgate, I would also be curious, and I'd be curious to know what the typical classroom layout looks like, how much space is in their classrooms, what kinds of distancing practices are being used? I've heard about Plexiglas and other kinds of things in those classrooms. I just, I want to make sure that we don't lose in the conversation and looking for how this works, that the, and this is coming from being in that committee where we've looked at numbers and at sort of impact on kids, but also on ability to actually follow those five critical practices that that everyone agrees are the things that keep spread down in an in an organization or in a in a group, those being like distancing and hand washing and masking and yada, yada, yada. And the the question is how well those practices are implementable across the board in our classrooms. And I think without really just taking a significant and kind of like long hard look at whether that's possible with our full numbers in our classroom spaces, that has to be part of the conversation, too.
Trustee Avgeras?
And I think that's the right questions, Trustee Decker. I think that how do we, how do we get this, you know, we see this comparison, what are they doing correctly there? How could we implement? And are we able to implement in our schools? You know, I brought up, when we had our one on threes there this last week, we got gymnasiums, we got cafeterias, we got music rooms in these elementary schools that are, they're not being used right now. So does that mean we utilize those spaces in some way if we can't do that? So those are the right questions, Trustee Decker, is how do we get, take with a model that they've been pretty successful with, it looks like from the numbers, and implement those in our schools?
Any other direction, comments, thoughts? Just don't see any hands up anymore. So if everyone's satisfied that they've at least had a chance to ask the questions they wanted to ask or provide information or feedback or direction, then as Dr. Watson indicated, this is inevitably, probably sooner rather than later, going to be on another agenda as an action item. And so just a reminder, you'll probably be getting a call from Tracy to see if you're available on the 19th, which would mean we'll still have two meetings in November, just because we do have to make some decisions for what it looks like after Thanksgiving. But it seems like it's better to do it next week rather than right, you know, getting so close to the holidays. So I don't know that she's been had a chance to do that yet, but expect some indication of can you make it next Thursday? And I'm thinking this will probably be a discussion item again, and possibly an action item. So with that, I'll end the work session, if that's okay with everybody. If everyone's thumbs up, okay.